Good afternoon. This is the regular meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee. It's June the 8th. We have a full committee here. Mr. Rizar, Ms. Gru, Mr. Smith, Mr. Rosenthal, myself, Bernard Parks as the chair. This meeting is going to be dedicated specifically on issues that address the economic welfare of the city, particularly as it relates to next year's budget. So the only item on this agenda that deals with the current year budget is items one and two, which are the final FSR and the special parking fund surplus revision. And so with that, the other issue is, is that on items 10, 11, and 12, just for the committee to be aware of, just so that we do not cause the city attorney any heartburn, any questions on those three issues should be on the mechanics, the operation, and not get into anything that deals with potential lawsuits, liability, or also anything that deals with potential negotiations. Otherwise, on any of those issues, we'd have to go in closed session. And I think we had an in-depth analysis of those issues in closed session last week. And so if we can basically on 10, 11, and 12 stay with process and the issues as to where we are on accomplishing some of these issues, I think we'd be in good shape. Okay, we can start off, and I want to make sure that while I'm doing this, Ms. Dougherty, you're the only person who has a public comment. If you can come up now on the public comment. And then we're going to go a little out of order because we want to make sure that Jerry's here for several of these items. Ms. Dougherty?
Hi, Phil Dougherty. The Department of Animal Services, I understand, may be following employees that care for shelter animals, but at the same time, the zoo is being exempted from the reduction in personnel hours because they care for animals. Additionally, Animal Services is a public service agency, and that means that officers will not be on duty if there's a fire or other disaster that requires immediate response. Since last November, I've been appearing in committee meetings, counsel, communicated with the CAO's office, city attorney, and appeared before the L.A. Animal Services Commission, asking that the department adopt a system of administrative citations to bring compliance with humane laws and increase the revenue to the city. The CAO's office informs me that they have, that the Animal Services Department has issued 30,000 citations and notices to comply, and they're waiting for the notices to comply to become citations before they start this process. Notices to comply do not become citations. So obviously, people don't understand, 15 cities around us, see, 15 cities around us are issuing administrative citations and bringing in revenue, and we could support this department and not have to lay off or reduce numbers of hours if we just started following this policy.
Thank you very much. Let me just ask, if we can start off, number one and two will hold to last, and then, see, we caught you already, you're ready to go with one and two. But if we can go to item three and six, and then if we can pull together 10, 11, and 12 as a group, we can then capture the items that Jerry's here for and that he, before he has to leave. So if we can start in that order.
Good afternoon. I'll start with the state budget. The situation, as usual, is very fluid. As of today, the governor has still not declared a fiscal emergency, and as we've indicated before, that declaration is necessary in order to borrow the Prop 1A funds. Now, the intent is by the 15th to make between $6 and $8 billion in, excuse me, in cuts and get those approved so that the state can do their cash flow borrowing. That, however, would not be the first round of cuts. There will be cuts then that come through that. What they're focusing on right now is to make sure that they can get in a position of not running out of cash before the end of July. The governor has stressed that he wants to protect local revenues, but at this point, even though the declaration has not been made, I don't think we should assume that the property tax borrowing is off the table. As we said before, the 8% property tax hit to the city, if they borrow the full amount, would be $121 million. There are other proposals being floated by the legislative analysts in the Department of Finance that involve Prop 42 money as well as gas tax money. The impact of those ranges anywhere from about $89 million to about $110 million. And that, again, does not include the Prop 1A borrowing. In a sense, I think this is where we are. There's, Speaker Bass has indicated that she is considering a proposal again on redevelopment agency funding. Given what occurred the last time, nobody knows what that proposal is at this point and legality of it, but as you recall, there was a redevelopment agency borrowing that was challenged, and the court found that that borrowing was not appropriate. I think in essence, that is really where the state is, that they are moving again very quickly to try to get a budget in place. So the expectation is that some major decisions will be made this week and the remainder before the end of the month.
Let me just ask, Jerry, what are some of our options if, whatever scenario comes about, if they, because if they take a smaller amount or a larger amount than we're expecting, what are our options? Because we certainly can't absorb them. So what are the choices that we'd have?
It's hard to say at this point, and some of it is going to depend on ultimately what they do. Under the Prop 1A, the property tax borrowing, there should be an opportunity for the city to borrow against that, and I know Ray can get into more details if necessary. It's a little unclear how they would deal with the gas tax money and the Prop 42 money and whether that would be reimbursable and under what conditions. So until we know, you know, what the state is intending to do along those lines, it's difficult to know whether there's an opportunity to borrow against future revenue to get the money up front.
Wasn't Prop 42 also covered under 1A? Because I thought we had this discussion with the state a couple of years ago, that if they tried to take 42, that we would have the revenue anticipation note opportunity because they'd have to repay that. I don't know about 1B because that subsequent is different, but I thought 42 is also included in that protection.
I don't, was, I don't know that it was protected under 1A. There was a, there was a previous proposal to borrow. They did have a repayment schedule attached to it. So as long as there's a prepayment schedule out there, depending upon the security of that, you know, there's an opportunity to borrow against it. Whether there's a definitive schedule of repayment and exactly how the Prop 42 borrowing would work is still unclear.
Okay. Jerry?
I'm kind of hidden in the spot here, so it's always difficult to see me.
You might be.
From the standpoint here, do we have any overall sense, is it still that $600 million we're looking at or more of a potential hit for us?
From the state?
$60 million.
Well, it's not 60. It's unclear where the 60 came from. I think it had to do with, you know, we have the secured property tax rolls and we have the property tax reimbursement for sales tax and VLF.
Right.
So I think the original 60, it's a number that came out, I believe, from the Department of Finance, but I believe that it was based on the secured property tax rules. The actual 8% of all of our property tax is 120.
120.
Now, between all of these things that I've talked about, the best-case scenario is in the $89 million range. The worst case, if you added all of this up, including the property tax borrowing, the gas tax, and the Prop 42, could be in the area of 200 million. So it's between 89 to 200.
And when, in your mind, of course, what do we know, right? In the next period of, what time will we get better clarity as to what our exposure might be?
I think we'll have some clarity this week.
This week.
On the initial cuts that are necessary so they can do the cash flow borrowing so the state doesn't run out of money on July 1st. And then I would anticipate that the rest of the actions should come within the next three to four weeks after that.
And in that timeframe, we could go up as high as 120 million is what you're thinking? Or maybe even more?
No, again, if you add up every element of every proposal that's out there, it's about 200.
200. And what would be the timeframe of us expecting to have gotten that money and didn't get it? How would we, you know, what is our timeframe of having to deal with something like that?
Well, I guess it sort of depends on what the state ultimately does and what the legislation look like, looks like. As far as property tax, you know, we get our big payments in December and May.
Right.
So if they're going to hit us on the property tax, then most likely, you know, those would be the two months where we would see a big drop-off in our revenues. When it comes to the Prop 42 or gas tax, we usually get those amounts monthly.
Yeah.
And so if they were to suspend those or borrow, what have you, then those would be monthly hits to those, to those special funds, to the gas tax fund.
So then potentially 200 million would be spread out over a six-month period, so to speak?
It could be, yes, depending on what the actual, well-called the take is from the state.
Yeah, right, right, right. And you get a better sense as this week progresses on some figure?
Now, one, actually impacting timing, one other proposal, I think, that just popped up today, Friday, is the state is looking at accelerating the due date for property taxes to September, which obviously is an effort to accelerate the collection of revenue. I would imagine that that would create quite a reaction, but even the timing on some of the revenues are uncertain at this point.
Now, the property tax is another issue. Story is, is property values have gone down, obviously, with this economic situation, and that a lot of people might be eligible to have a lower property tax. If that's true, that will obviously impact whatever we thought we were going to get out of our property tax.
Well, for the most part, the property tax rolls for next year are pretty much set now, but it would carry into 2011. You're absolutely right. There is concern about continued downward assessments. There's concern about commercial property, which hasn't been hit so hard yet, and that there'll be an acceleration of, you know, prices on commercial property as well.
Okay. Thanks.
That would be challenged in court, obviously, by Dr. Charles and others, and that ain't gonna happen, so I'd be surprised to see that. If we had any discussion with the state, as far as taking money from some of these other funds, if they were to do that, ask them if instead they took it all from the property tax, because then we have the property, then we have the 1A protection, and they might be able to do what they did a few years ago with the so-called triple flip, where they flip it over into some other fund and then give us the ability to be whole in a few years. So we, you know, essentially, we protect ourselves instead of taking from those other funds that aren't protected. You know, they're, I mean, they were pretty creative with this triple flip stuff years ago, so why not be creative again? And I know when we discussed and we negotiated 1A with the governor and in the legislature at the time, that triple flip was going on, and we're trying to consolidate and get out of that business, but if they're going to take that money again, it would protect us.
Well, we can certainly look at that. Again, until the declaration is made, the property tax take is not on the table. I don't think we want to encourage that it be put on the table. And the reality is that on 1A, you know, I know, so the attorney's looked at, the bottom line is that really the only implications for not repaying us is that they can't borrow again.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not as strong a repayment obligation as we might like, and if they take the gas task tax and the Prop 42, we may actually have other avenues to make sure we get repayment.
Okay. So on the, on the property tax, how could they do that statewide by September? I mean, I, I mean, I think you would have a huge outcry from constituents to, you know, all of us.
I don't know that, it would be very difficult to do. Again, I think they're, they're throwing everything and everything that they can up at the state to try to balance the budget and try to accelerate revenue. I don't know that that's a very reasonable thing to pursue.
And I know as we are, and I see Bill Lamb here and us going out for the TRAN with the CAO, and we've talked about that, you know, how does that impact us at all in the next four weeks with the budget?
Well, certainly when it comes to the TRAN, I mean, we're sort of looking at our cash flows, looking at the control, when we'll receive those, basically receive our revenue. As part of the assumptions, I mean, we have not factored in any state hit, no matter whether it's gas tax, Prop 42, or property tax. I think my office, if they are going to truly take property tax, then we feel that we're going to be doing some sort of, well-called borrowing at this point in order to get, keep that money in the budget, because we basically, if it's property tax, it's unrestricted revenue, and we will need it in order to get through next year. So we're looking internally as far as how we can actually set up a mechanism, will be the best mechanism for us as a city, and if the state actually says, yes, we're going to take your property tax.
It's scary in the, in the thought of it. I know Mr. Parks asked a question about the different values of where it's coming from, whether it's through the gas tax or the property tax, and whether or not there's a borrowing opportunity. And I mean, the scary part is if we, you know, they are supposed to, key word, supposed to, two words, repay us with interest on that, but what happens if state files for bankruptcy? What happens if, you know, other kinds of issues, then we are caught in that. And so going forward, I think those are really difficult questions. We're going to have to ask, risking our financial future on a state government that we're not sure whether they ever will repay us and in what time period?
Let me just ask also, on Prop 1A, do we have any prior loans that the state has taken, and have they all been paid back with interest as the rules? If like, is there any money outstanding?
And as far as I believe, where everything has been repaid, there might be some state mandate stuff that we're still waiting for some reimbursement stuff, but as I understand it, the big pots of money they have repaid.
Actually, technically, I believe that there's never been a borrowing under 1A. They borrowed property tax, I believe, in 2004, and they agreed on the repayment, and that prompted 1A.
1A, okay.
So actually, this would be the first borrowing under 1A.
And what is it, two times in 10 years or something?
Two times in 10 years, provided, of course, that you can't borrow the second time unless you've paid back the first time.
And then if they borrow, is there a specific timeline of payback so that you can actually bond against it?
It's three years.
So they have to pay back, so when you get the bond, you're listing that as the payback? It's a three-year cycle?
Yes, but again, I think CEO can get into more details if we were to do a borrowing. I mean, the bottom line is, I would assume that any revenue borrowing would be paid back by revenues in general, not just the property tax. So I think as Ms. Gruel indicated, depending upon the strength of the repayment and what the state does, if the city were to have to borrow, we would put ourselves at some risk for not getting the money from the state, and we'd have to find other sources to pay it back.
And then let me ask again, Ray, you commented on the issue of the different types of money. Does that alter our ability to bond or leverage if it's, if it's gas tax or Prop 42 versus property taxes? Are they all in the same framework as far as how we would leverage?
No, I don't think they're all the same. I believe we have some protection with the Prop 42 that perhaps we could look into borrowing against, but I think we do not have the same protection if the state takes the gas tax. As I understand it, basically, they could probably take it, and we're, we would have a huge hole and would not expect any repayment.
Okay. And then let me ask, are there any issues dealing with the federal budget that would impact us? I know this is immediate as far as the state, but are there things going on in the federal government that would be of concern to us?
Nothing that we are aware of at this time.
Okay. And then let me ask on these issues, and Ray, if you can kind of give us a thumbnail of what's going on across the state, or what other cities are doing in contemplation of these takings or borrowings, do we know what's happening in other large cities in the state?
Actually, when it comes to potential borrowing, certainly if the state were to come back and say, we're going to take 8% of the property tax, we have been working with San Diego, and we're going to be working with a lot of the other larger cities across the state to find out whether or not, whether we can come up with some legislation that gives us the best protection and the best deal if, when, in the terms of borrowing. We're looking at whether it might be more advantageous for us to go alone. Last time with the VLF, the county got an exemption, and so they were able to borrow on themselves. We're looking as far as we can do some sort of a pooled approach with the large cities, or whether we want to have a, what I'll call JPA, that was set up similar to last time with the VLF. So we're looking at sort of the various options and whether or not, how we can best get a favorable rate as far as borrowing.
And then the other issue, have we looked into what the potential impact on the city if the state also cuts the county in like numbers of services or funds that we have an expectation, particularly services?
Well, I, we really haven't identified any, any direct hits from the county, because for the most part, our money doesn't flow through the county. Money flows through MTA, obviously, but, but the multiplier effect, whether it's releasing prisoners or whether it's reduction in social services that might result in increased homelessness or crime, or, you know, there certainly could be some impacts, but we haven't identified any direct impacts from the cuts to the county yet.
Now, you mentioned earlier about MTA as a direct source. Is that, any of this impact any of the recently approved Prop R?
No.
If I may, I think one bit of some good news, we'll see when we actually get a check, is when it comes to the Prop 1B funds and the Prop 12 and 40 funds, you know, the state, various agencies have indicated that they may be releasing some funds. I think we're waiting until perhaps next week on whether we receive anything from Prop 1B, and then hopefully we can find out in the next several weeks whether we'll have any money released for the Prop 12 and Prop 40 projects.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have amounts right now, but they've indicated, as a couple of weeks ago, that they may release some of those funds to agencies across the state.
That would impact, I think a while back, we put about $7 or $8 million in our funds on about 25 city projects. Does that, that would relieve those funds back to the general fund, or are we thinking this could be more than just the 25 projects that we identified?
We don't know as far as to what extent we may receive some money, but certainly with the borrowing that we did, as far as either MCO or the Public Works Trust Fund, we may be able to repay back some of those loans.
But we don't know at this time whether that, at this project, risk gets bigger. Okay. Okay. Any other questions on item three?
Just one, and I haven't even asked this question in years, but does the, would the borrowing of upwards of $200 million, if we did a revenue anticipation note, impact our GAN limits at all or is it just the debt service on that? The interest?
I think that's something we'd have to look at. It didn't affect it last time. As I recall, we have significant cushion under the GAN limit, but we'd have to kind of follow up.
What is the, how much of a cushion do we have on GAN? Because I haven't asked that in years and it was...
Billion?
It's substantial. I believe that the GAN limits really applied a long-term sort of general obligation bond type that...
Yeah.
It's roughly about a billion.
So we have cushion there, good, okay. And then just FYI too, I know the California League of Cities has been talking about maybe doing a master, floating of a master bond for cities to buy into, so there might be a better interest rate if we join with all those cities too. So if we go that right, you might ask this League of Cities where they are on that because there had been some discussion about that.
And they have been talking. Basically, the league has been working, perhaps set up another, you know, agency in order to do the borrowing. Like I said, we're trying to determine whether it's work with them or do our own stuff.
Are there any revenue streams that the city or the county collects and remits to the state that we might be able to withhold to offset some of these reductions? Do we have any monies that we could hold back from them?
I'm not aware of anything that we collect or that we remit to the state. I know that the county has talked about withholding money and I think the state's response is we'll find and we'll just withhold more from you. So I don't know whether that's viable, but we certainly will look at that.
Okay, if there's anything we give them, I want to put a hold on. And the next question is, are there any reforms at this very moment in time that the city or the state budgeting process that we ought to seek at this time? Anything we can push through the politics in Sacramento that are reforms for this process?
Well, I think much has been talked about relative to the requirement to have, you know, the super majority to approve a budget, the rating of local coffers, the, really the transfer of revenues under Prop 13 from local to the state and then getting remitted back so locals have lost control. So there is a substantial potential budget structural reform at the state level. I can say that at this juncture, until they get past this crisis, they're not even interested in discussing anything like that. They just need, over the next six months, to get past this crisis. But I see going forward that those issues are going to be discussed a lot.
Like for instance, Prop 13, not talking about the homeowner, but Prop 13, it has to do with business. They've never reevaluated an existing old business and a new one. Some have said there's five to seven billion dollars gold in the gutter that we should be collecting from the commercial side of Prop 13. It's been talk, 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 but now the politics should be hardball and stuff like that. Do you think it's possible for our legislative arm, take a deep breath, instead of just waiting for those folks up there, that we can throw some real energy at it?
We will certainly look at that and we will be working on that.
That's one example, there might be others.
That's just one example, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, thank you very much. We've moved to item six.
You should buy Fitch ratings.
It's okay. I think you wanted us to provide an update as far as our rating, ABCs and...
The rating and also invited our treasurer to come up too in the sense of talking about the rating as it relates to the overall cities' funds and investments so that we can get a picture in. Natalie's going to tell us about how we not increased debt another 23% next year.
Natalie, go to CAO's office. The last rating that the city officially received was for the issuance of our MIGL debt. It was about, I believe, a month and a half ago. We are currently seeking ratings for our judgment obligation bonds, our TRAN and our general obligation bonds, all which will happen in the next two months, two and a half months. Fitch put us on rating outlook negative, which basically means that they believe that there are some issues with the city's ability to, I guess, control what's going on in the economy as well as internally. They quoted a decline in taxation revenues, ongoing softening of city property values, and basically the worsening of city's unemployment rate, which are all external to the city's own management process. I think that what saved us from the total downgrade as happened in 1993 was our strong management of the budget, the fiscal policies, the quarterly or monthly reports that the CAO does, the willingness to put money aside to deal with those cuts, to deal with those problems and cut if we need to. And also, the Fitch report also addresses the fact that we are dealing with the pension issue, either through layoffs or furloughs in the 9-10 budget. Both Moody's and S&amp;P, Senate Empowers, maintain our AA rating and do not put us on negative watch, but they are very concerned about our ability to balance our structural deficit in the future. And both of those agencies noted that they would be looking at that. We have met with all three agencies since this was put there and their main concern has been what the state is doing and how that affects us. Their concern also is on our outlook for pension contribution in the future as well as revenue declines that are in the 9-10 budget.
Okay. And then let me ask, Joy, you had gotten some information to us about what your perspective is on some of these rating issues as to your investments.
Joy, at the Forest City Treasurer, one commitment I had made to this committee was I would always bring you big news before you heard it. We have the opposite problem in treasury in that we have AAA's, we're not on any watch, you know, just luck of the draw. But what has happened, Moody's, we've been in discussion with Moody's and unfortunately they want us to change our management style and how we manage our money. When we first, we were the first city in the country to receive a rating, a AAA rating from Moody's. It was based on having a five-year investment program. In recent discussions with Moody's, they said that we haven't done anything wrong, they concede we haven't made any changes. Quite the contrary, they have made a change in how they review those people they rate because of some of the challenges, shall we say, they had when companies like Lehman went bankrupt while they were holding a AA rating. It concerns me because they have now interjected a subjective component into the rating, which they also agree is different than when we previously had the rating. And so instead of having a matrix like we do for S&amp;P where we can plug in an investment and see where we are vis a vis ratings, we can plug in something in the matrix provided for Moody's and then someone takes a look and they can think, well, we don't like that company even though the company from everything that we have looks fine. One, I think one of the things we've proven over the last few years is that we've developed an investment strategy that works in good times and in bad times. And one of our responsibilities in holding taxpayers' money is to do the best job that we think we can do with that money. I would be hard pressed for us to change our strategy just to retain a AAA at Moody's, which it appears that's the road there, head it down, especially when it was a company that made some mistakes in rating some of the major financial companies in the country. So I want to reiterate, we're not on watch, we haven't been warned. There have just been these discussions that, well, you know, we're looking at you a little differently now and we want to judge you on a three-year rating and you're outside of our comfort level for three years. We've never had a three-year program in the city, we've always had a five-year program. But perhaps the most disturbing thing, we review financially the rating agencies just like we do any other financial service provider. And we came across a recent New York State court case where representatives of Moody's under oath said that their analysis was puffery. I asked Moody's executive management to provide me an explanation on why then should we change anything or how can even our debt program rely on a rating when their officials are saying in court it's puffery? It was disturbing, we did not get an answer. So I guess my purpose in asking to speak today is to tell you that we are going to tell Moody's that until they have an objective criteria for evaluating our portfolio, we respectfully decline to be rated in the future.
What does that do with other companies?
Well, I would be more concerned if it was S&amp;P. S&amp;P is very objective, very, you know, clear, transparent, we know what we're doing. S&amp;P looks at our investment rating as a component of our city's debt management program rating. Moody's, they have conceded to me that they don't look at that in assessing the public finance rating. So it, it does not appear to, we can't find anywhere that it harms us at all. And I've also talked to our outside investment advisors and they frankly agree with me that we've been very successful. Why would we change something that's been successful to fit into some arbitrary, it seems to me, criteria?
Is Moody's the company that came up with a reduction in classification for every municipality after the downside? Is that the company that did that?
Yes, Moody's put out a report that basically looked at all municipal debt throughout the country and gave it a negative outlook. When the city of LA called and asked, well, what does that leave us? The response was, no, it doesn't apply to you. Because in general, they believe that municipal debt is possibly more risky now than it was a year ago, six months ago because of the economy. For us, like I said before, it's really our management qualities that maintain our rating. Obviously, the economy plays a significant part, but Moody's did assure us that that did not affect our rating.
But I mean, they didn't distinguish us when they put the report out and so anyone else would assume we're part of the larger issue?
Not necessarily. When investors buy our bonds, they are now more willing to look at our own rating. Since we don't have insurance anymore, they really do a lot of due diligence and look at our rating in particular. And over the last year, I have received more phone calls from investors than I have over the last seven years. So they really are looking at our own credit and reading our own reports versus just relying on the rating agencies.
Okay.
Joy, when we're talking about Moody's, are they, I mean, they do obviously a CYA situation there and they got burned pretty bad, but is there a commercial side kind of dictating then to the municipal side how you evaluate or are we, are we going to be held to standards on the, that the commercial side's held to, which is totally different kind of financial operations? Or are they still keeping the municipal side totally separate, but trying to just bring in some new policies?
I can't address that. Well, I can tell you what I think has happened, at least with Moody's. After their challenges over the last 18 months, their executive leadership changed and is now based in Europe. There is a general feeling in Europe that the US is a cause for a lot of the issues that have happened economically. And in talking to their European leadership, they seem to be less inflexible with looking at us, the city, as an individual, as someone who's never been in trouble and actually who's far quite well.
So if we say then we don't want to really do business with Moody's anymore, is that going to affect our ability to sell bonds and stuff?
No, this is totally on the investment side.
Just on the investment side?
Just on the investment side.
So not on selling side, just on the investment side?
And we were the only city in the country with a AAA rating, so now there are no cities in the country with a AAA rating on the investment side.
The problem with not using Moody's on the debt side is that a lot of the institutions use Moody's as their standard for buying debt. You know, they like to see a double A. If we were to withdraw from Moody's on the debt side, it would be detrimental to our bonds.
So there is a risk that carries over?
On the municipal debt side, yes.
Okay.
And I just would add one concern that I had for our debt program in talking to the investment side and how this sort of came to our attention. Moody's had rated some commercial paper their highest rating, but yet on the matrix, the score really lowered. And when we asked what the issue was, they said that they no longer were looking at, even at their own rating on short-term like commercial paper, they were looking at the underlying finance rating to factor that into an investment rating. And when you start sort of going back and forth, it didn't seem to make sense to us.
But is this, is this new system of evaluating, are we being judged against other munis? Or...
Well, there are no other munis on the investment side. We were the only muni.
The only one.
They're trying to fit us into sort of the model and we're not a Lehman, we're not any of the other firms that had challenges. We're very conservative and part, just because we're conservative, we're controlled by state code. But it's, they're trying to compare apples and oranges and they've thrown us in the apple cart and we're an orange.
Why were we the only muni? Why were we the only...
Well, what I thought when I came to the city was one way that we could perhaps expand and do more investments, perhaps, perhaps look at the pension funds. The pension funds often go out to have, either they invest money inside or they have RFPs for managers. And with two ratings, I thought it might be easier and because sometimes government has a negative reputation, when rating agencies were considered, you know, the ultimate word, I thought it added a lot of credibility.
So it was our choice to have two?
It was our choice.
And most other municipalities just...
Most other municipalities don't even have one.
For the treasurer, what are your thoughts on the actions that Fitch has taken and what's the impact on our investments?
Well, I do think that the city has a lot stronger management than the typical municipality that they might evaluate. I can see that they're trying to be conservative and the, from what Ms. Gruehl just mentioned, you know, those all are true, true. But I think all of the rating agencies would be, would be wise to just look at the historical basis of the city and not to say things aren't bad now, they are, but I think that there's been a collective effort to address the financial situation of the city. The city has never gone bankrupt, the city has never defaulted. There's been excellent management here. So my thoughts are, I think we proved them wrong by doing what we do the best.
And so Fitch noted some external factors that has affected our ability or for them to downgrade us, but that's happening to most every major public jurisdiction. So what other major cities did they downgrade as well to a negative outlook?
That I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
So we don't know yet? We don't know what Fitch's recommendation is on other major cities?
No.
When will we know?
Well, I can check the website and I'll let you know the five largest cities and where they are.
Yeah, we assume it's probably the same, right?
I would assume so.
Okay, and so we're comfortable in the fact that we feel we have financial policies and management to get us through a storm, but these external factors we can and couldn't control for. Anything else we should do right now to, we're doing what we can, is what you're saying, but any immediate action you need to take as a committee, as a council, as a city to help us get through this negative outlook? help us get through this negative outlook?
Yes, if I may. We need to, two things. One, you're right, we have external forces that are affecting our revenues and we've seen those declines. And the other piece, as you had mentioned, we as a city have to be ready and willing to stand up and then take the actions that are necessary to put ourselves in balance. We're going to talk about the FSR later, about this year and how we've been able to close the gaps and get ourselves balanced by year end. But certainly in '09, '10, we have some gaps that we need to address. And so the sooner that we get a game plan and put that game plan into place and so that we're taking some actions to deal with our challenges, the sooner the better.
So the sooner we take action on the gap that will be created by the less revenue we're taking from the state, that's going to help. Anything else on our financial policies that we can do to help the situation?
Well, one of the things that we had talked about in the budget discussion was sort of talk about establishing the stabilization account, though we would not be able to have a lot of money that we can throw in there. But certainly showing that we want to set ourselves up. So as we get to the point where we have more flexibility, then we're willing to start setting aside some revenues to deal with the downturns. We know as things go up, things always come down.
Any bonds that we anticipated selling in the next few months or this coming year, does this negative outlook affect our ability to establish bonds? We may be paying highest interest, higher interest, but we haven't gotten to a point where people would not buy our bonds, correct?
Correct. The negative outlook when we sold Mclough really did not affect our ability to sell the bonds.
Any other just public jurisdictions that you're aware of that are unable to sell bonds at this time?
Besides the state?
Besides the state, local jurisdictions?
No, everybody that has gone out, including San Diego, has done a phenomenal job of selling new bonds. A lot of it has to do with how dry the market was a year ago and people are starting to get back into the market again as interest rates have stabilized, it's not as volatile as it was before. So they're starting to buy municipal bonds again.
Okay. And no sign that S&amp;P is going towards a negative outlook on the city?
No, both Moody's and S&amp;P have talked to us and their concern was what Ray indicated, our ability to balance and especially balance our personnel-related costs such as pension because the forecasters show that is one of our potential problems. So that specifically is mentioned by Fitch. Moody's and S&amp;P talk about the structural imbalance also. But they understand that with the economy the way it is, it may take us longer to do that. Because as you said, everybody's in the same boat.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just following up on that, we've always talked about the structural issues here. Do they put any particular requirement in their mind about what our pension program should be or what our health care strategy should be or, you know, comment about retirements or, you know, anything to do with what we're really dealing with right now?
No, they don't say you should fund that X percent or you should contribute. No. They basically look at sort of our management team, look at our finance, and look at the direction that the city is going regarding its fiscal policies and where the numbers are headed. And as you know, more than a lot of folks, we've been sort of, we've had a number of challenges in the current year and we have challenges going forward. You know, they want to see us, that whatever challenges that present itself, that we address that, put a plan in place to resolve that issue and then move on.
And that's the level of awareness they have is we want you to get it balanced. We want you to be able to cut, but they don't cut beyond that.
Okay, thanks.
It'd be nice if we had a little blueprint from them other than just negativity. Thanks.
Let me just ask, just for clarity, on the issue of the investment side versus the selling side, could you both go back over the issue of what the concerns would be about having Moody or not having, can you do one without the other or?
Absolutely.
Okay. So there's a clear distinction that you can make in not harm the selling of bonds with the issue of the investment?
That's correct.
Okay. One of the things I'd like to do on that item because it's a little different than what we have on the agenda, we're going to ask Kelly and Lynn to put that on a very soon, a very quick response to a Budget and Finance Committee so we can deal with that as a separate issue. And we'll ask the CAO and CAO later, give us a report back as we go forward. Because I think it would be important for the council to make that judgment as to making that decision as opposed to putting that on your shoulders. And someone later said, "Why did we do that? That we make it as a council, as a policy decision?"
And I understand, Councilmember, I brought it just out of full information. I probably, if circumstances had not been as bad economically, I don't think it would have risen. It would have been within my purview as the investment manager. Just be aware that we are in discussions and the thing that I was trying to do is get in front of Moody's because I don't want Moody's, you know, once they get wind of this, for them to say, "We dropped L.A." I think the ball needs to be in our court.
Yeah, I agree. But I think the issue is, what I'm concerned about is that it should be, I think, a very quick turnaround in a council decision that puts the weight behind your words as opposed to it being done from the general manager's position. And council members may not be aware, may not understand the clarity of why it's being done. And so we'll ask that we put that on the next Budget and Finance Committee so that we can give the support that needs to be done in that area. Okay? Any other questions on item six? Okay, we're going to move to item 10, 11, and 12 as a group.
All right. Item number 10 is a follow-up on the declaration of fiscal emergency. Item 11 is the CAO to report on the furlough implementation plan. And item 12 is Personnel Department and the CAO to report on the status of layoffs and the status of discussions with unions regarding the impact of layoffs.
Okay. Can we have all the city staff to the table, Personnel Department and other department staff that deals with any one of the three items? CLA?
Certainly, as you well know, we discussed last week, the furlough program. And we brought to you a plan that could be implemented beginning July 1st, based on the council approval last week. We did prepare a memo for all departments to discuss with them and give us some information as far as developing their furlough plans. As you, as we discussed earlier last week, they see we wanted to establish some general parameters, the first one being, you know, closing. We wanted, I'm sorry, let me back. We wanted to keep it simple, easy to understand, very straightforward for both internal purposes and external purposes. We've been discussing shutting down the second and fourth Friday of the month for all of those operations that are not 24/7. This would include some security in OPS, other areas in PD, the detention officers, the PSRs, also looking at revenue-producing positions and whether or not, what type of schedule can be implemented for them, looking at other operations that don't fit neatly into that second and fourth Friday. For those departments, and there are many departments, we've asked them to report back to our office with a plan and a strategy on how they would implement furloughs beginning July 1st. And I just want to make clear again that at this point, the council did not adopt an actual trigger. It was only for adoption of a plan that we could put in place as of July 1st.
Let me just ask on the issue, are you getting the responses that you need from the departments? And then we're dealing primarily with number 11. Were you talking about the plan?
Yes, we are getting, we've asked them to report back by the 12th, basically by the end of this week.
Okay. All right. And let me ask Maggie, are you getting information back from departments so that you can go through not only the furlough but the layoff list and getting accurate information and permanent information?
We are getting information, but it does change daily.
Okay, so that doesn't help you create a layoff list if it's changed daily?
Well, I mean, we're spinning our wheels considerably because as the list changes, then we have to redirect our efforts to figuring out layoffs seniority in different classifications. Shannon Pascal is here and I'm sure that he can give you greater detail.
Good afternoon. At this particular point, we provided the committee with a list of the positions that we have been asked to start layoff calculations for. So in the blue book, I think the mayor had identified 400 positions, but through various actions, we're looking at doing it for 76 positions right now. Okay?
Explain to us why the reduction?
Well, I think a number of them were restored by the council through some council action and I think some of them were moved off budget and are being funded through other sources as well. So the information that we have actually received from the departments is what you have before you. And so that's what we are currently working on right now.
Seventy-six out of 400, so--
Correct.
Explain to me what the--
Let me provide a little bit more context so we can just kind of back up just before Shannon goes on. The mayor's proposed budget, when it comes to regular position authorities, they're deleting 1,284 positions. Council restored 172 of those for net changes of slightly over 1,100. Those are the regular position authorities. Of the original 1,284, 400 were anticipated to be filled back in early April. Okay. In addition, the proposed budget includes just over 1,000 resolution position authorities. Council added 14 back. So total resolution authorities are 1034. Now with those changes, like I had mentioned, 400 were really part of the proposed budget and were anticipated to be filled due to council action and departments going back and looking at the dollars that they have in their departments. They're now saying of the original 400, only 76 to this point need to go out the door.
Is there something that shows, here's the 400, here's how many are now being funded by the department separately? Is there anything in the reports? Because this just shows us the 76.
We do not, we have not matched the 76 up with the original 400 and we will do so in the next few days.
Let me ask Ray, one thing I don't understand is that the way the budgets were cut in the sense of vacant positions and then the salary savings and such, and then down to the 400 layoffs, where would they find funds that were within the budget to accommodate keeping positions that were basically unfunded and basically cut? And that's, I mean, particularly this large number. I mean, unless a large number of them went to special funds or to other departments or proprietaries, I just don't know how they could absorb 300 positions under the condition of their current budget.
And just before you answer that, I think the question is as well, when the council, albeit reluctantly adopted that 400, there was some, at least some method to the madness, I believe, in what was projected. And so if the departments made some choices, I'm not sure that this is maybe where you're going. Were those the priorities as we're making tough decisions now on furloughs and other layoffs and other positions? The department's making those choices in a vacuum versus overall, or maybe they're looking at the overall and we were looking at a vacuum? I don't know, but that, I think we don't, with just seeing 76, we're kind of at a loss as to how those changes were made without us understanding the implication.
Sure. And what's important is basically the position changes are what were adopted. So those authorities, those reductions go away. Department general managers, they have to manage to the salary dollar. Each of us, you know, Maggie, myself, and others, we're given a dollar amount that we have to manage to. Part of what has been asked of departments by the mayor's office is to develop two separate plans. One, you were given X dollars. How would you manage to that assuming 26 furlough days and whatever else is needed, whether layoffs, et cetera? That's the first plan. The second plan is also, assume you have $100 or X dollars, how would you manage to that given your number of authorities, meaning you would have to lay off a certain number of folks? It's really up to the general manager to manage to their dollar amount within the respective position authorities. What we have seen is departments, as we, these 400 were laid out, departments have gotten very creative in finding ways to move people, I would imagine, into special funds, that budget-type funds, et cetera, et cetera. So the net result, what was proposed originally at 400, out of those position authorities that were once filled, now there's only, departments are saying there's only 76.
See, I think that's one of the reasons that we asked at the end of the budget process was departments being directed to provide with us, to us, a report that says, what aren't you going to be doing? What will you continue to do? What will be diminished? Because I think it puts us back in the same circle. If we were really saying that there was 400 layoffs, the potential could go much higher if you are unsuccessful with the 10% cuts. And on the first 400, if they magically became 76, then that gives us an indication that there's monies in their budget that we're not familiar with. Are there offline monies that we're not aware of? But 300 positions is a lot of positions to absorb in budgets that had no absorption. I mean, because they were cut three times. And so that's one of the issues I think we have to get to with saying, how did we, where did the 300 go? Because most people's expectation is that the 400 is going to grow.
Jerry has the magic answer. It looks like he's anxious.
I don't know the magic answer, but I think the focus on the dollar amount is the correct one and how departments are going to meet that. The specified cuts that we're talking about here, I believe the figure in the budget was $86 million. The council restored approximately, I think it was 14 million of that. So there's still a $72 million cut in the initial round that departments are going to have to identify. On top of that, of course, is the shared sacrifice. The furloughs are 100 million of that and that covers only about two-thirds of the civilian side. So there's another one-third that's going to have to be cut through position reductions of some sort and that doesn't address the sworn side either. So this, again, is just the first round and it will be very important going forward to focus on the dollar amount and make sure that the position reductions are commensurate with the reductions that departments have to take.
Well, I think just to, not to beat a dead horse, but I think that, you know, we cut programs, lots of other things, based on the fact that there was no money within each of these departments to operate those programs. And so now hearing that, again, going from the 400 to the 70, and there were other decisions out of positions that we were potentially going to eliminate going forward, that the numbers for us don't add up as to making policy decisions and the priorities of which we want to be able to fund. So I think, and this may be where you're going, Mr. Parks, is we really want to see in that 400 number how we got to 76 and where that remaining 324 went.
And one of the other things, I think, that we need that fairly quickly. And then we also need, as we know, if we get to July 1st and as people are massaging their numbers and are a little less creative, next thing you know, they heighten the layoff figure the longer we get into next year's budget without some firm numbers. And then I want to talk on item 12, on whether we've actually staffed Maggie to do all of this stuff. I mean, so these are things that are really of concern, that we could be driving our dollar value of cuts up because people have massaged them and they've not really addressed the 10%. And as Jerry says, the 10% is only two-thirds of the larger equation that they're going to have to find another third. And that doesn't even get into what is the 10% for public safety and it just gets unwieldy. and it just gets unwieldy. And again, I think we're going to have to have our arms around some of these numbers well in advance of July 1st. We don't have that much time. And I think that's why I think we're probably a little shocked that 400 became 76, you know, and maybe some of this math, we'll look up and we'll find that we really don't have a budget crisis if we keep counting like this. We can just make it grow away with the racers and...
Well, that would be nice, but, you know, this is only the first round. And of the 400, I know a portion of those were added back just for sanitation because they are wastewater positions, and I think as Shannon just whispered my ear as well, that we've had over 300 in some transfers.
Transfers into positions that are offline?
No, transfers going from the council control departments to the proprietary departments.
Okay, so they're going to other funding sources of the general fund?
Right, so I think in the last, since March of 2008, we've actually approved over 350 transfers going to either water and power or law or the hall department. And of those, 350, well over 285 have been general funded positions.
And so these positions, as they leave, are cut off the TO?
Correct.
All right, so then that reduces the workload for Maggie, she doesn't have to lay them off. But the issue is the next wave is what I think we have to be concerned about, because that's going to be a wave that's going to be significant.
Right, that is true. We don't know the true answer to that today. Now, the mayor has asked all departments for basically a work plan. Asking them, like I mentioned, the two different options, the one assuming 26 furlough days, the second assuming we don't have furlough days and you need whatever number of cuts to manage to your dollar amount. So that is the second piece that's being looked at now. I know departments have originally, they have sent over numbers to Maggie, the personnel, regarding the 10%. I know they're changing hourly, by the minute probably, depending on what's going on. But I think departments are doing that assessment right now, figuring out, okay, I have $100, you know, how many people can I afford on the payroll?
Also, let me ask, in the sense of the, first of all, the numbers, we're going to have to send some direction to the departments to give Maggie the numbers once and for all? Because to waste her time looking at these numbers and they don't match, and they're not the real numbers, and she doesn't have the resources as it is, I think we're going to have to send a direction that as of certain date, these are the numbers, and she's going to go with them. And that way we can solidify what direction she's going in. The other issue is, we gave some direction at the end of the budget about asking for report back. How consistent is that report on asking the departments to outline their next year's approach to their budget? How consistent is that to the mayor's letter in the sense of what he's asking for?
Actually, Dave was confirming that basically they are the same. You had asked departments to report back with basically the number of positions would be, that would have to be cut in order to deal with the shared sacrifice, the 10%. The mayor basically has two options. One, assume 26 furlough days and then whatever else is necessary, and then 100% on position cut.
Because I think what the essence of our report was, we did not want council members to be shocked at these cuts, so when they looked at Wreckin' Park or they looked at libraries, they'd know hours were going to be cut, they would be reduced. We wanted to get a sense of what the cuts meant operationally. And so the issue is, once those reports come in, then we have the ability to begin to assess what departments are doing. Also, as Ms. Gru was mentioning in the scene, if they put priorities that are inconsistent with the direction of the budget. And then we wanted another report on those, I think we have it on the agenda today, those five or six departments that got a stipend to help them manage their department, what were they doing with those stipends? So we'd know again what their priorities. So those are two things that we need back so that we're aware that everybody's consistent with the priorities and that we're consistent with the direction as it relates to layoffs and also as we get into furloughs.
What I heard was 247, 247 went to other departments, 76 we have here, and then you'll come back with the remaining number, correct?
In terms of the transfers? Transfers we've approved, 350.
Okay, I guess out of that 400, is it 247 out of that 400 were transfers?
No, we don't know whether or not any of the transfers had anything to do with the 400 that was identified. The mayor, I'm just clarifying that, there are ongoing efforts to remove positions from the general fund.
So you've not correlated the transfers with the positions that were cut?
No, because the list that we were presented with at some point does not necessarily is consistent with what we've been doing in terms on the transfer side. All I can tell you is that we're moving people out.
And that was over a period of 14 months, so that's not just within the past couple of months.
Let me ask the CEO, then, with the transfers 300 plus, then we could assume that many of those positions are refillable if they're not in the cut list?
Basically, given our very stringent hiring...
Tell me they're being managed hiring, but it doesn't mean they're off the TO?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. We'd have to go back and sort of match up what was cut versus what, where people have been, what position people have transferred out of.
Okay, but we know for a fact that those that we cut, if they moved out of them, they either laid off or the person transferred, the position is cut. So we know there's a net decrease of 400 positions in that regard, or close.
Yeah, they're deleted, they're deleted. The 400 are gone.
Just, I would like you to know that the Personnel Department has been working with the mayor's office, and we are not giving any examinations nor are we filling, certifying positions even from proprietary departments until they've gone through the process of considering transfers of employees from city departments.
The other point I also wanted to bring out too is that we are giving two examinations specific to water and power that we anticipate will take off in another 100 to 150 general funded positions because it's been given on a promotional basis for city employees.
And what will that occur?
The exams have taken place, we're waiting for the eligible list to be established and for water and power to start certifying the lists.
And how many, how many was the numbers you estimate?
We estimate about 150 total.
And we expect, because it's promotional, they'll be coming from the larger pool?
From the council control departments, correct.
Okay, but let me just, on number 11, and I think, I think just from the time you had to put this together, I think you've covered almost all of the points in giving consistency. I'm just going to tell you my big concern, and you already heard it, but the issue that I'm most concerned with, as we cut back on the budget and we're cutting positions, the community loses services. And then for us to make a decision internally that we will cut special funds positions in the same manner so that people won't sit side by side with different funding sources, appears that the community is suffering unnecessary cuts. I mean, so that's an issue I'm concerned about, that if we have funds with special funded positions, it doesn't make sense to me that we cut them merely so everybody is on the same furlough list. And you've given me 12 rationale, and I keep asking the same question.
I know that has been a concern by yourself and probably many others, certainly as the design of the furlough program is we want to make sure it's simple and equitable for everyone. At this point, the only departments that were exempt from this particular plan at this point were the proprietaries. And going back, the issue is, you know, this is truly a labor solution, and so we cannot divvy up within departments, you know, having one person on a furlough, another person not, depending on their sorts of funds. And this, we want to make this as equitable as possible for all that are affected.
I just want to make it equitable for the public that's paying for 27,000 people to come to work every day, that we're not just arbitrarily cutting their services because they happen to be funded out of a different source. So we'll keep working at that.
Yes, we can have that discussion.
Okay. Any other question on eight, nine, 10, 11, I mean, 10, 12?
I'll just wait for the question.
I just ask, and I assume when this comes back, that we'll have a qualitative kind of description of how we went from the 476, it was kind of difficult to follow there verbally exactly what happened, so something in writing that describes it as opposed to just mere numbers will be very, very helpful to us understanding that. And secondly, there's the, we're still under discussion about possibly exempt departments from the shutdown days, is that accurate or has that been finalized or went to...
I think it's been finalized, there aren't any departments that are exempt right now. This is for all civilian, you know, employees across the city. What we've asked is basically, not every department would be, would close down on the second and fourth, you know, Friday of the month, but basically those who have certain operations, you know, GSD, OPS, you know, et cetera, PSRs, they need to come up, those departments need to come up with a plan, whether it's some sort of a staggered furlough program, what have you, they need to come up with a plan, make sure they can implement the furlough.
So no one is exempt, we just are asking certain departments to come up with a plan to ensure that those services continue to be provided. And any changes from the plan that we saw a week ago to today, has there been any changes on those departments that were listed? No, there's the same list?
No, basically, we ask departments to report back by the 12th.
By the 12th, okay.
I want to say confused position, but I certainly agree that we have to treat everybody equally. You can't have one person sitting in one desk and the one in the other, just so happens that you are being paid for by special fees. But here are the questions. How many positions do we have that are in a special fund category?
Actually, I don't know, we have a position account, I know percentage wise, it's a good 40% are sell.
40%?
Yeah, 43% are on the special funds, 57% on the general fund out of a workforce of about 26/6 at the moment.
Okay, so let's stay with that 43%. I'm in the planning department, and my salary is paid for by the development project. And if I take that furlough day, I mean, I don't mean merely Smith or Tom Jones, I just mean the position at this point, is that not stopping that project from its normal timeframe funded by those special funds, say from the developer? Slows it down, cuts it back.
It slows it down by 10%. Assuming 26 furlough days for everybody, that's a 10% reduction, so 10% slowdown in the delivery of that particular service.
And if you're saying 43% of our folks are on those special funds, do we recoup that money or what becomes of that money that we're not spending because they're on furlough that day? Can we use it for other things or is it only restricted for that, and therefore what impact does it have?
It's basically restricted money can only be used for those things, but employees should only be charged in their time for hours work for a particular project. So if they don't work, then the developer or what have you should not be billed for those services. Now, as we look across the spectrum of all the funds, each of them have what I'll call a story behind them in essence as far as what's fully cost recoverable versus not. I know, you know, last week, the planning, the new planning fee study came before you, and I think it was mentioned that only, what was put on the table, it still is only about 70% of cost recovery. So in that particular example, then I, we have more than enough cushion to deal with the furloughs as far as whatever that decrease in salary charge against that particular service.
Okay, but that money doesn't in any way revert to anything, it's just isn't spent and it's money that could have been spent because the monies were there. In other words, why can't we be more creative? If 43% of us are on a special fund, that we want to treat everybody equally, why don't we just kind of give a certain percentage of everybody's paycheck comes from those special funds so that, you know, we keep those special funds and just use general revenue funds, which is where our key disaster is? Why can't we do that?
I think what we've been told over and over is that if you use special revenue funds, you have to be in that special revenue category, and even within departments today like building and safety, some of them are in that fund and others are not, and they constantly are looking to make sure there's sufficient people in each one of those funds that it has, coincides at some degree with the money that's being taken in. So we're not taking in more money and less services. I don't think we have the ability to parcel it out in a fact that everyone gets a piece of it if they're not doing special fund duties. If that's the understanding I think we've been given over time.
Yeah, I mean, that would be part of it too. Certainly, people, their time to charge for multiple projects could be charged in multiple funding sources then. You could have one that's funded by unrestricted general fund revenue versus one that's actually partially funded by a particular fee, so.
Now, I'm wondering if you could be more creative than that, and instead of saying 43% of our employees are a special funded project, maybe we could take a smaller percentage and put it across the board for everybody and obviously keep that, I want to keep those special funded projects, and I want to keep those special monies, monies more than anything else, in our coffers. So if we could disperse it differently, we could keep all the special fund money, but you know, we take the furlough days and all that, and we just, it just helps us with our general deficit and our general budget. I mean, I know we haven't done this before, but why can't we think like that?
We'll take a look at it and lay out what the options are and what the impact would be, and some of those ideas.
And I think, you know, the figure of 43% is even more of a concern, that we would be looking at it in a fashion that, and we'd assume that 43% of the funding might be doing about 40-some percent of the work, that we'd be cutting that workload arbitrarily because of the furloughs on the general fund. And that's why I am concerned about how and why we would do that. And I understand the balance and people sitting next to each other, and you have a furlough day and somebody else doesn't, but I think at some point in time, the public's interest has to be put into that discussion, so.
We'll take a look at it, and I think the 43% actually does include the proprietary. So if we take them out of the mix and that 43% is going to come down a bit.
All right, so we'll ask for something that we never asked for, report back. Okay, and let me ask on number 10.
Is that summer study or should I do it on the furlough day?
See, in your life, summer never comes, see, that's, we found that out, summer never comes in the CIO's office. But let me ask on item 10, anything that we, after we've made that declaration, is there any other steps we should be thinking about dealing with, addressing at this point in time?
Relative to the emergency declaration, we're on course with the events that needed to transpire thus far.
Okay, so the council has acted on what you've given us. Okay, if we go to item 12, in dealing with the issues of layoffs and such, and I think that's where we're concerned about, the list that we need to direct departments to give Maggie the official list, and then we'll get back from you how this 400 transpired into 76. But I also would ask the CEO, would you take a moment, if all of this workload is being pushed into Personnel Department, do they have enough resources to do it? And if they don't, and this stretches the timeline out, then we end up with a situation that's going to be more costly in the long run, and so...
I have to take advantage of this opportunity, given that you've asked...
Let me do this, let me do this, Maggie.
But I do want you to know that the Personnel Department has a number of charges at this point in time. We still have police hiring, albeit less than what we originally intended, but it's still a significant process. We've got to keep our workers' compensation costs down. I cannot make any cuts there. We still have employee benefits, but it's important to note that right now we're operating with about a vacancy, a number of vacancies to the tune of about 65 positions, plus we lost over 25 in the budget. And I think that, I just want to make this appeal, that in order to handle the layoffs... I just want to make this appeal, that in order to handle the layoffs, I can't do all of those things, so I am going to require a certain amount of grace from all of you as it relates to cutting in the personnel department.
On that 65 positions, you say are vacant, how many of them would be in the process that you need for the layoffs, or do you have a figure on that?
Actually, I don't, I wouldn't ask to fill anything at this point in time, I'm just asking to maintain my workforce as it currently is configured, I have a layoff team currently of 27 people that I've taken from other divisions within the department, we are working on training a second layoff team, but I'm not going to be greedy here or take advantage, but I honestly, I cannot take the cuts that are being recommended and still get this work done.
Do you have any sense of, say, the first, the 27 that you have on the, the first layoff team, how many of those are scheduled to be cut?
At this point, we would lose 50% of the layoff team, the initial layoff team if those cuts were to go in.
All right, let me just ask the CAO to get with personnel department, and again, I don't know whether, this is as we've done for the three departments that we merged, that we said there's a timeline or a grace period, because none of those positions can go away the 1st of July, but we do need to see what the impact without positions and how much more it would cost us if it takes her nine months to 10 months to lay people off versus three to five months, and so we need to balance that and give it some, some issues on that. So we'd ask you to look at that and give us a report back on that specific item on number 12.
Thank you.
And then again, whatever the means, we have to notify departments so that she can get information that she could work with, we need to do that immediately so that we know that. So those are the report backs on number 12, and we've given you direction on dealing with 11, that we're getting, going to get information back from departments, and then 10, it appears we've done all that we can at this point, so we'll move 10, 11, and 12 with that direction and amendments.
Mr. Parks, did you want to go to, did you want to go to the FSR next?
What I'd like to do is we go back to three, because I'd like to do the FSR and number two together, and that's going to be probably the major discussions, and then we won't be interrupted, we can just do it all in a package.
So those will be last. Item number four on the agenda then is the mayor's office and the CAO and CLA to report with likely timelines for revenue generation and cost reductions that would be realized through furloughs, layoffs, salary rollbacks, reduction in work hours, retirement incentives, and any other shared responsibility and sacrifice options.
I think this came out of, yeah, recommendation number nine, was this one of our report backs during the budget hearings, we asked for this, submit the type of scenarios?
Yes.
Okay, let me just ask the mayor's office if you have any additional information on what some of these scenarios and timelines, if anything has occurred since the budget has come from the council, as to give us some more clarity.
Well, as Ray alluded to earlier, the mayor's office, the mayor, they released a memo that went out to, to all the general managers requesting that they report back by the 24th of June with their operational plans for the next fiscal year, and, you know, just to comment on one of your earlier questions, we definitely do want to have, don't want departments duplicating their efforts in terms of reporting back to both council and the mayor's office, so I know the CAO is expected to submit additional instructions relative to those memos, and we would just ask that they include whatever other information you would like departments to submit, to, to have them included as part of that report back, and that their report back not just go to our office, but to, to the CLA as well.
No, we'd appreciate that, because we don't want to particularly at this time get people double work, and that's why we ask, how consistent was our request with the mayor's letter, and if it serves both purposes, then we'd be satisfied in getting those back.
It was our intent to be as consistent as we could, so that it would serve that dual purpose.
And I think from us, in, in reading the mayor's letter, the only thing I would say, and it's probably mixed in there with the direction, we were really interested in the operational impact, and I think that's where council officers would be concerned, so it's not catching them off guard of what does a 10% cut really means, and until you see it in paper that it might change an hour, reduce hours, close for certain days in the week, I think that's the kind of information from the council that we're looking for.
We couldn't agree anymore, and we, that's exactly what we expect departments to submit.
Very good. Any questions on four? Let me ask the CAO or CLA, any comments on four, anything as far as timelines, because I think there's, you know, we're looking July 1st as a drop dead date, that things are going to have to get moving, as we've said before, we only have a couple of tools at the council to see if layoffs are furloughs, and so as people make us aware of other things that might occur, some of that could be rolled back, but I think, as we've talked about on one of our other items, we have to chug along on what is before us. So anything for CO, CLA?
Well, briefly with regard to the furloughs, as we've mentioned, 100 million, 105 million, in the budget balancing actions do relate to the furloughs, and it's important, absent something else happening in the very near future, that those start as soon, as soon as they can, without getting into great detail in terms of restrictions on, on hours worked per week and retention of benefits, et cetera, the 26 furlough days per employee need to happen next year to generate that $100 million. So in terms of timing on, on the furloughs.
Anything else from CAO?
Timing on the furloughs clearly has to, in order to generate the $100 million, we have to start on the first furlough day being July 10th. With regards to the other issues, layoffs, you are getting a report back on, on the next phase, so that will be timed up as, as you approve those positions being reduced, and then go forward. For the other issues of salary rollbacks, reduction in work hours, retirement incentives, and, and other shared responsibility items, all of those are subject to the negotiations we have ongoing. The, the major issues as it relates to solving for next year are the sworn contracts, because they represent a significant portion of the deficit that's currently projected, those negotiations are ongoing, and in terms of a, you know, to the extent that we need a deadline on the civilian side, ideally, we would have answers by June 18th, because June 18th is the date that the controller's office would put the programming in to implement the cost of living increases, and it is the commonly held perception that once those are in paychecks, it's going to be much more difficult to attempt to get them out, so that's a timeline.
Okay, thank you. Wendy? Jose? Ray? Okay, we'll move item four with that information, thank you.
All right, item number five is the city controller, CAO, and the city treasurer to report with an update on the city's cash flow projections for 2009, 10, and 10, 11.
Natalie, should you be up here, should Natalie be up here dealing with the cash flow and, and TRAN as part of this discussion?
Or we expect the controller's office to have all the answers?
Oh, okay.
Our assistants, of course.
Yeah, we'll ask Natalie to sit next to the controller's office then.
But I, I am expecting lightning to strike at the same time.
Why don't you give us an overview on, on what your perceptions are as it relates to dealing with cash flow?
Right now, we're spending average payroll biweekly, $117.9 million. With the 3% civilian salary increase, about half of our salary is civilian, half of it sworn, we go to $119.6 million on July 1.
Let me have that figured again.
$119.6 million on July 1. That is spending at a rate that is $3,123 million compared to a budget of $2,737 million, which is about $385 million above the budget, and equates to a spend rate of about $104.9 million biweekly. We have been working with the CAO on assumptions for the purpose of the TRAN, to be able to bring it down to a reasonable number by year end, and the assumptions that we're looking at, $100 million for the furloughs, 1,000 retirements in August, 1,000 retirements in September, 1,000 layoffs in January, and bringing in $90 million for, from special purpose funds where we have people employed, but based upon past history, we don't have an appropriation yet. With that, we will still anticipate needing an appropriation at year end of about $60 to $70 million from the reserve fund. This assumes that people are transferred aggressively from the general fund to special purpose funds, that special purpose funds vacancies are filled with general fund, that the 3,000 people that we're talking about is a decrease in general fund staffing of somewhere between 25 and 30%. In essence, we have about 20,000 civilian employees right now, about 12,000 of those are general funded, a 25% would reduce 12,000 down to about 9,000. It's an aggressive approach, but that's what we're working on at this point for the TRAN. If it doesn't work out, then we're going to have to be coming back with additional cash flows for next year, and then for the following year depends upon, a lot of the cash flow depends, do we bring our employment authority down next year so that we can start next, the following year at a lower level? What do we do with the pension system, the retirement system? Can we reduce the contributions? And then what happens on the revenue side? It is a pretty bleak picture for the next two years.
Okay, let me just ask also on, for the general public, when you talk about TRANs, could you give a thumbnail description of what it is, and, and one of the things, particularly the payback within a year, and what's that based on as it relates to the city's revenue?
Basically, the TRAN is a tax and revenue anticipation note, it's a short-term borrowing that the city does in July, that those funds need to be repaid by the end of the fiscal year, so it is a short-term borrowing, we use it for, for three pieces, one is for cash flow, and it's also about $400 million for 9, 10, for, for the controller's office. It also includes, I want to say, $660 million to fund, pre-fund basically our Lasers and pensions contribution for next year.
Okay, and, and what is, the fact that we use that method, what is it based on? Is something to do with our, what, how much money we have in our reserve fund, and the ability to show we can pay that back within a year?
We have to show, and that's why the, the cash flow is very important, we have to demonstrate that we can show repayment. When it comes to the pension and retirement, I mean, we have a couple of different ways that we can pay, we prefer to prepay, because we get a little bit of savings by prepaying versus paying a little bit over each pay period throughout the year. The cash flow portion of it, the $400 million, is simply because we do not have sufficient cash from our revenues between the period of July through early December, and the controller needs to, to borrow roughly this 400 plus another probably 200 or so from special funds until we can get our big property tax payment in, in mid-December.
And also, for the public to be aware, when you say special fund borrowing, those funds are returned upon us paying off that note.
Yes.
When our revenues come in, so it's not, so the first thing I don't want to read is that we have slush funds that you just move around at your discretion, you have to pay those back because special funds have a declared definitive use.
The charter provides that we can borrow up through the last Monday in April, after that we have to repay it, repayment has first call on any revenue we receive after that.
And let me ask, on dealing with that, Natalie, on the sense that we talked earlier about these evaluations or bonds, what is the effect of being on the negative list, or if we're downgraded and having to sell that TRAN bond at somewhere, what are we talking about, a billion dollars?
Currently, we have the highest rating on our short-term borrowing from all three of the rating agencies. Most institutions that buy our TRAN will require that highest rating. At this point in time, we still believe we can get that higher rating.
Yes.
Again, that'll be based on discussions with the rating agencies, but on the short term, we do better than we do on the long term, because they do believe, we have track history of nine, 10 years of paying back a TRAN on time, so there's really not a lot of concern that we won't be able to pay that back.
Okay, and also explain why it's important in the sense of having those ratings and how it impacts our payback and what the interest might be.
Correct. The interest right now on TRAN is running at about a half a percent, because short-term debt is in demand by the municipal market, there's mistrust in long-term debt, that's why we're paying more of a long-term debt right now than a short-term. And then on that side also, it's really important that those ratings stay at that, at the top rating. We are planning to do the TRAN negotiated for the first time, only because of the size, it'll be close to 1.1 billion, and we do believe we need that market story to be told, because there are, there's a lot of noise with the state, there's a lot of things to explain, you know, sometimes we're mixed up with the state.
Okay, thank you. And let me ask, Julia, you have any comments on cash flow, where we are on our, the investment side?
Just one comment, and that is that we're taking another look at the securities lending program to add more cash, to more revenue to, to the city. We had suspended that program when the economy was real chaotic and, and companies were going under, we'll be taking another look over the next couple of weeks to see if we can reinstate that program, if so, it's not much, but it's what, 135?
135, 140,000 a month.
A month, yeah, 135, 140,000 a month, but it is some money, but we remain concerned at, with the same issues that were discussed earlier, and, and that is the state take-back. We also need, just to bring to your attention, and when we do our investments, we have been assuming a 16% general fund for the entire portfolio, we're looking, with all the reductions, at a reduction of the percentage of the general fund of the total portfolio, so as soon as those things stabilize, and we do take a look at that every month, we'll be probably reporting back more frequently on, on any reduction that we see. At this point, we're still looking, although rates are predicted to go higher at the end of the year, I think those are somewhat offset by the reduction in revenue that we're anticipating.
Wendy? Jose? Ray? Okay, let me just, one of the things I think would be important, and if we can get, because of those numbers, I think are quite revealing as to the cash flow the controller gave us, if we can get a report done on that with the involvement of CLA, CAO, and get that to council, so they're aware prior to July 1st, just what we're talking about in the sense of what's needed, what the daily amount that's needed to pay our payroll, so that people get a sense of pulling this together, that when TRANs comes through, that they understand what we're trying to accomplish and why, I think that would be important, so if we just ask for that and we get it scheduled to council as quickly as we can from the controller, CLA, CAO.
We'll be happy to work with the controller to prepare, basically prepare, I think, some general parameters on, on the cash flow and, and the need. I would like to just say that we've had a number of discussions with the assumptions, I mean, this is a very difficult year, obviously, we have, we've removed 320 million out of salary accounts for all departments, and, and this is the challenge, as the controller tries to look at existing payroll and then try to project in order to be somewhat balanced by the end of the year has been very, very challenging, and so the, a lot of the assumptions, while they are, they are just assumptions, you know, they will change as we go forward throughout the year.
And we want to give the flavor, and I think also, it goes hand in hand with the projections. you've made on what revenues might be coming in for next year. But I think what's important is just looking at the overall cash flow needs or projected cash flow needs for this coming fiscal year and what might be our concerns for next year. So those are some important numbers as we move through and handle the budget each week in this committee.
I think what makes it very difficult this year is the assumptions. And that as we're going forward, we're still making the assumptions as to how we're going to bring expenditures in line with the budget.
No, I understand. And I think that's what's important for all of us to know. They are assumptions, but just as we project revenue, some of them we hit right on, some of them drop below, and we adjust each and every week as we move forward. But I think it would give some context to, I think, some of the seriousness of some of these numbers and how big some of these numbers are for the council to be aware of as the stuff continues to come before them. Okay. Thank you. So we'll ask for that report back to come to council on particularly the information in the Controller's report.
Item number seven on the agenda is an instruction to city departments to report with an organizational overview, summarizing department operations under the 2009-'10 budget, including submission of org charts depicting each department's new operational structure.
I think we've dealt with that one already on that request. Did we find a way to merge those, this request with what the mayor's office letter so we can move on that item?
Item number eight is a city clerk reports relative to the restoration of council's board positions using discretionary funds. There are several departments mentioned here. From what I understood, city clerk was the only one that had submitted a letter so far.
The thing is, I think on this one, I think the councils, from what I understand, supports that document came in with the budget itself, but we do need these other five or six departments to come up with a like report. Unless there's some comments from committee members as to the city clerk's usage of this $500,000, we can move that item. Any questions on the usage of the money? So we can move that item as far as the city clerk, but we do need to ask those other four or five departments to come forward as quickly as possible so we can get the priorities. Liddy, you had something?
I was just coming on this, on this side, although I do plan to put mine under the mattress until things get better. But in the meantime...
We got one of your share of certificates, sacrifices, we're taking your mattress away.
I'm telling you, it's getting...
Sorry, just a frame.
Are you going to report on later?
Yeah. It's in writing.
Okay. So on number eight, we got that clarified?
Right. Yes.
Okay. So we'll accept the city clerk, and we'll ask other departments to respond.
Right. Item number nine, city attorney to report on the status of all ordinances required for implementation of the 2009-'10 budget.
Mr. Chairman, Pete Echeverria from the city attorney's office. We've identified 21 requests that came through the budget process for, that involve ordinances, the preparation of ordinances by our office. Since the adoption of the budget, we have released six of those ordinances already, leaving 15 which are being worked on an ongoing basis. And we expect that of those, seven will be released within the next two to three weeks. And the balance, which require more input from the various operating departments for the setting of fees and the like, would take a little bit longer, but we're hopeful that they will all be released in the next, probably six to eight weeks at most.
Let me ask, Pete, if you could, the ones we asked to concentrate on, those that were revenue generating, could you give us an idea on the six that are done so we can do this? Because we're working off of Exhibit H that was in the budget, and so that we can get some idea which items are completed?
Unfortunately, the ones that are revenue generating are the ones that we require more input from the departments on, and so those are the ones that will be taking a little bit longer. We need the departments to let us know what those fees should be and to have those to the extent they need them validated with the assistance of the CIO's office to do that as well before we can plug them into the ordinances. Writing the ordinances doesn't take as long as the process of getting the information to input into those revenue generating ones. The simpler ones are the ones that we have, we have released so far, the ones that required fairly straightforward changes to the code sections that were involved.
Okay. The thing is, what I need is you can give us a breakdown of the six that are done, those that are pending, and then if you are having some difficulty from departments who are not responding on the revenue generating, then we need to know that so we can direct that information to be forthcoming because for every month that we do not have that ordinance in place, we lose revenue that's already placed in the budget.
Right. I wouldn't care, at this point in time, I wouldn't characterize it as difficulty getting responses. I think it just takes time to do that and to come up with the right numbers and to validate them because they have to figure out how much actually is the cost of services, for example, being provided and so on.
But I think, Pete, one of the things we want to emphasize to them, for the last, I think, three years, we've asked in every budget for departments to start their review and have them in, I think, by December of each year so that you would have six months to work on those ordinances so we could hit July 1st running. And so anybody that is not aware of that has missed the last three budget processes, at least three, I think, we had. So the thing is, they shouldn't be, they should have been studying this well in advance for the fee generation. And again, we've asked consistently that by December of each year, they finish their fee studies. So, but again, if you could report back to us on, for item nine, the six that you said are done, those that are pending, and those that are revenue generating that are not in play, if we can get that, we'll hold this in committee until next meeting. And that's, is that next Monday? Next Monday's meeting? And if we can get a report back on these 21, happy to do that.
If I can ask a question. One of our please permit commissioners mentioned to me on Saturday that alarm fee increases that we had for penalties, I think, last year had not been implemented yet with an ordinance. Is that accurate? Have we, did we increase? So if we could just check on that, but I guess there was some increase that we haven't seen yet. So if you could just check.
Okay. That's news to me. I'm not aware of it. There was one additional item, however, that you had through your staff inquired about, and that is the ordinance for, on a piece of LA, not adopted through the budget process, but one that interest has been expressed upon. And that's almost ready to be released. We're waiting for, to resolve some questions about the standard terms and conditions that will be used by general services in making those sales. Once we have those, we will be able to release the ordinance. I expect that that will happen within the week. So that was about done.
Thank you.
Let me ask the CIO, do we have, I thought when we dealt with the planning fee increase that we were going to facilitate it getting to council, is the earliest we can get it is June 30th?
I'm sorry, the planning?
The planning fee that we dealt with.
With last week?
Last week. Is the earliest we can get that to council is the 30th?
Yes. From what I understood, Mr. Parks, it was delayed because the general manager won't be available for a period of 10 days, but we are working on the two issues that you asked for us to report back on, the related costs as well as the issue of the enterprise fund.
Okay. So this, the thing is, and we've only, was it seven months of these fees we?
Nine months. It was changed by council to nine months.
Nine months, okay.
And I will point out, I will point out that's one ordinance we released two weeks ago.
Okay. All right. If we can, for next week, if we can get an accounting of the 21 as to the timeline, and then we look forward to the number 14, dealing with the planning fee increase in council on the 30th, and move forward. Because I think we have 6 million or so in the budget contemplating those fee changes. Okay. And then let me ask also for Ray on, in the CLA, on Exhibit H, on the other actions, if we can ask also on, there should be about, yes, 15 other actions, on next Monday's calendar, could we get an update on where those might be? Because if they're summer reports or something, we can expect the changes, we can get some idea of, and that would be inclusive of all the items we requested on Exhibit H. So if the CIO and CLA can respond to the other actions and the city attorney address the ordinances for next week, okay? So we can move that and continue to next week.
Before we begin the FSR discussion, the CIO has asked for a clarification on item 12.
Yes, I'd actually like a clarification. As you know, we had the discussion previously regarding the 76 of the 400 at one point. There's been some question as to whether or not council has actually approved personnel to process those initial round of layoffs.
I don't think, I think we promised the council we'd come back with a triggering mechanism to say when, but we had to clarify how many, and I think that's...
And so we have the 76 at this point for what I'll call the first round.
Okay. But I think what we need for it to come to council is to explain what happened from 400 to 76, and that reconciling the list of maybe how many transfers resolved it, and to clarify that the 400 was actually cut. So we can bring that to council.
Quickly.
Quickly for the triggering mechanism to say move forward. But I think to save a lot of discussion, we have to clarify the 400 to 76 and where they went, and are they really cut? And I think we're prepared to do that.
We'll provide you that information, and hopefully we'll be able to answer all of the questions for all of those positions. But I would only hope that we can move forward.
Okay. We move number 12 to council, but we need that CIO/CLA report.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number one on the agenda is the CIO report relative to the year-end financial status report for fiscal year 2008, 2009.
And we could include two in that we can discuss them.
Item number two is the CIO report relative to the special parking revenue fund surplus and revision of the 2008, 2009 budget.
Yeah, okay. Why don't you just give us a run-through? I don't, because it's the end of the year and because there's so few departments that are in deficit, I don't think we need to go department by department, but different committee members may have questions. But if you can give us an overview and how we've gotten where we are and what some of the changes that had to be made in order to cut down those mid-year deficits, I think it would give us the text of what we need.
Okay. I'll give a quick, real quick summary, and I'll let Maria go over a little more detail on the summary. But one of the things I do want to sort of start off, you know, this year certainly has been very challenging. We started the year with a roughly $110 million shortfall that increased to 130 about mid-year in December. Various actions were taken to bring that down. I know we've been working throughout the year, and a lot of credit has to go out to a lot of the departments as well. Certainly, they've, they've been squeezed. They've been going through the managed hiring process, which has created savings. I know they have grumbled, but they have done a very good job as far as bringing their appropriations in line with what was budgeted. One of the, the things I do want to point out, that certainly we've recommended various actions to help close this year. Certainly, for us to close, in the black, I'll say, we do need the mayor council to approve the special parking report. That's item number two that we're going to discuss in just a few minutes as well. We do need that 38 million to help bring us in line for this year. If we do not, then we will impact the reserve fund projection at year end. As you know, I think the SPRF, there have been sort of challenges with this year in the revenue projections. There was the sale of the Mangrove property. It was also assumed that receipts from the increase in meter rates and times would generate roughly about 22 million. However, that the actual number has been closer, perhaps six. And that has created a hole along with our other revenue problems as far as trying to close this year, so.
Maria? Are you going to go through some individual departments on, before we ask questions?
That's fine. Do you have any questions about any of the other revenue pieces?
I, my major issue is number two, so dealing with the special revenue. But why don't you take us through some departments and through some unique challenges? And again, we don't need to go department by department.
Okay. Well, as mentioned, overall, departments have reduced their expenditure deficits considerably. And with strict adherence to the managed hiring process, a lot of the deficits that were called out earlier in the salaries accounts have been reduced, which is limiting the impact on the short-term layoff agreement account and the UB Reserve economic uncertainties. So based on that, we have recommendations of approximately $21.3 million from the UB Reserve for economic uncertainties. It's important to note that in some cases, departments are receiving or we are recommending that they receive these appropriations, not necessarily because they have overspent, but because in some cases, they were awaiting reimbursements which may have been received and deposited directly into the general fund, yet they will still require an appropriation to balance. In other cases, such as the city attorney, it's because funding was not included in their salaries proprietary accounts, or funds are not going to be received from the proprietary departments until next year. So not all of these appropriations are directly tied to departments overspending. So first department is the city attorney's office. We were previously reporting deficits within that department in the mid-year. However, since the mid-year, they've been able to identify special fund, special funds to offset remaining shortfalls. There is approximately 1.2 million that is being recommended, most from the UB Reserve for Economic Uncertainties and from the short-term layoff agreement account to offset a remaining 1.2 million in balance. And that, of course, is mostly related to reimbursements from proprietary departments that will not be received in time.
The one thing I'd just comment on the city attorney, and I think they've done a good job in reducing that, but I think we also need to be aware that at our request, they've moved a lot of settlements into next year's fiscal year. And so we, and I think they have a lot of, a couple of very large ones that are pending. So that's going to be some sensitivity as to their litigation account because in some that's come before council, we've approved them, but they pushed the financial part into, after July 1st.
Right. And in the case of the liability claims account, we are recommending an appropriation of $126,000 to that account. Other department that was reporting a significant shortfall earlier was the fire department. Believe in the mid-year, we identified a remaining shortfall of approximately 6 million. Now, the only issue we have is a $2.29 million appropriation shortfall. This is mainly a result of reimbursements that were expected to be received from the deployment of staff for natural disasters. The funds were received but deposited directly to the general fund, and as a result, we're recommending a $2.29 million appropriation from the UB Reserve for Economic Uncertainties. Other issue that came up is in regards to the Capital Finance Administration Fund. In the mid-year, we reported that the convention center, and because of the convention center's revenue shortfalls, they were unable to meet a $1.7 million obligation to the Capital Finance Administration Fund. At this time, we're recommending an appropriation for that amount to the, from the UB Reserve for Economic Uncertainties. There was also an issue within Cap Finance of an unfunded NICLA issuance. As a result, we're recommending a $321,000 additional appropriation from the UB Reserve for Economic Uncertainties. And total appropriation from the UB Reserve to Cap Finance Administration Fund is 2.2 million.
Okay. Okay. Have any, committee members have any questions?
I have one on aging, which was one of the first ones as well, which indicated that funds will be returned to the grantor because of vacancies. I don't know if anyone from the aging department, I mean, that seems, you know, not, not a good thing that we're returning money. Anyone from aging? Yes, I'm not sure if you heard the question, but it says in here that there's a surplus suggested of $372,000 which will be returned to the grantor because we couldn't fill the positions.
That's correct. If we do not spend the older Californians Act, the older Americans Act funds within the fiscal year, they do go back.
Okay. Is there a reason in a, in a time of when probably the services are needed as great, you know, in a greater fashion than others and people who might be able to use those positions, why we weren't able to fill them?
Well, we have funded our, the positions as fully as we can, but we've been running like about 25% vacancy rate. And so, to a certain extent, we simply cannot spend those funds. We had the efforts throughout the fiscal year to fill positions, but we haven't not been able to.
Okay. Without going into greater detail, I think we need to figure out how we do that, because the return of money means we won't get it. If I'm the older Americans Act and say the City of Los Angeles cannot spend their money, I'd say I'm going to reduce your amount that we're going to give you in the following. So, if we'd ask the C A O to work with you all to have a report back as to how we rectify that situation.
We, we do try the best we can with the resources we, we have. As I said, we've been running, we're running a 25% vacancy rate. This fiscal year, some of the positions have been vacant almost too, and so-
And why, I guess I keep asking, why can't we fill them?
Well, just the way the process is working right now is very, it's just been difficult to get filled.
Okay, well, we have 400 people. We are just about 1,000 people we're going to lay off. I, I think, you know, no disrespect, but I think we need to figure out how to fill those positions because we shouldn't be returning money.
I agree with you.
Sorry, I know the message you're here, but, but I have, can I just go ahead, I'll just, a couple other, Housing Department, real quick. There is, continues to project a deficit in the lease account. It sounds like that's a normal, I just made it sound like an anticipated lease account, five regional sites continues to project deficits. Hi.
Good afternoon, May you turn. It is, there is a projected deficit in the lease account. Those are still prorated expenditures for security and for, that's part of the lease agreement. So, it would be security use of the different, for parking and for, let me see, for electricity in the various offices for housing. So, it is part of the lease agreement.
Okay, so, but we're entering into lease agreements that we didn't budget for? I guess that's my question, is if we budget X amount for a lease?
For '08, '09, because the, the lease agreement is budgeted, it's not really budgeted by the G S D, it was, okay, I'm sorry. The lease agreement was between the G S D department and from the various contractors. So, what had happened was that the G S D department failed to advise the housing department in terms of what the appropriate amount is to budget for '08, '09.
Okay.
My question from the housing department, just to add that with the annual lease renewal, there were scaled increases for each of our leased facilities that weren't accurately incorporated into our projected needs. So, this is what we're incorporating now.
Okay, so we need to make sure that in this year, as we're looking for, if, C A O, that as we look towards next year with Housing Department and G S D, that whatever the budget is amount, we should know at this point in time, any projected increases. I assume we have lease agreements that are for a year period of time.
So, those are, well, for the adopted '09, '10, yes, we have budgeted enough for the lease account. We, I believe we approve a 1 million increase in the lease account for '09, '10.
Okay, to incorporate that, okay. And then, just the other question is on the contractual account. It says a, an anticipated deficit. I know piggybacked on I T A accounts. This has to do with our systems contract programmers who are responsible for the development of our Chris system, which is our database for all of our co-enforcement and billing system, as well as for our housing information, information management system for all of our housing development programs. So, these are the contractors who are assisting with the development of those programs. And this was not budgeted?
An initial ongoing budget was included every year, but in order to meet the development requirements, we've needed additional contractor time, in part to also address vacancies that we've had within our programmer positions, having certain benchmarks for enhancements that we need in our systems, particularly our billing system. We've had to maintain our contractors longer than we originally anticipated in light of certain vacancies that we've had.
Okay. I think, I mean, colleagues and Mr. Parks and Smith, I think that asking these questions is because we, we, next year, we are not going to have, I mean, even this year, it's difficult for unanticipated and just happened, I picked out the two that I saw on here that were, seemed like they were anticipated costs versus kind of unanticipated. This was a little bit of going forward, that we really need to identify them earlier in the year to see, make, make decisions as to whether or not we're going to go forward on projects that are more costly or positions that haven't been filled, et cetera. So, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Smith, do you want to?
I just had one question on the, the U B funding for neighbor councils, $150,000. What was that in the U B for?
Are you referring to basically the, the election dollars?
No, that was 54,000. There's another 150?
Yeah, the 54,000, that was basically the anticipation that the additional fund, funding would be needed for elections wasn't necessary. And then, I believe the 149 is, we also anticipated the formation of the new additional neighbor councils. It just didn't occur.
Okay.
The productivity incentive revolving fund.
Productivity fund.
Or something, on page 49 of the report.
Yes.
I'm not sure, what, what is that? Because I'm not as familiar with that as. And it's $200,000 and transfer back and forth. What's the intent of that fund?
The intent of the fund, it goes back several years, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't recall how long ago, that basically, money was, was put in to help fund productivity and efficiency projects in the departments. This was money that had been sitting there for a few years, and as part of the, our discussion back in December, the mayor proposed taking 200,000 from this fund and dealing with the shortfall. In this action, we needed to actually have council take a few related actions in order to effectuate that action that was adopted back in December.
Okay, so this, that explains it all. Does that mean we still have a fund that's going to be used, or we're going to use these funds for other purposes at this point in time?
Basically, the, the 200,000 is used to help budget the balance, help balance the budget for this year.
Okay.
And I believe there's $103 million left in the fund for efficiency and productivity type projects in the future.
$103 million?
3,000.
Okay. He said million, didn't he say million? Okay, thank you, he said million.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah, okay. I thought, well, we can balance the budget on that, okay, 103,000. Jody up back there gave her eyes one up. 103,000, okay, thank you. You did say million. There were a couple instances in, in this document where I saw that funds were put into the general fund instead of going back to the departments that had been anticipated. So, revenue, is there a way to rectify that in the future too, where if it was supposed to go back into their department but accidentally went into the general fund?
It's, it's not an accident, it's by design. Basically, those departments spend money from the general fund, and thus, when we get reimbursement, it needs to be recorded as revenue.
Okay.
I mean, as far as keeping our books balanced and straight. And then, basically, on those, once we re-recognize the revenue, then we can then appropriate-
Back to the department.
The dollars back to departments. It's, we can't give it straight to the department. It needs to be booked as revenue first, and then we increase the appropriation in those departments.
Okay. And just my, sorry, my last question here on the, we did on alarm fees, I don't know if Pete is still here, but I think the alarm fees, we did approve two weeks ago the increase, because ordinance came to us a few weeks ago, it was a 30-day period of time, but that was an ordinance from last year's budget. So, are there any other fee ordinances that have not been passed since last year's budget? So, you mean to answer me right now, just to be able to get that information? I see Pete in the back, but just to check with Pete and see if there's any that, I know we talked about those that are currently here, but are there any others that we did not adopt in this last year?
We'll provide information when the report gets to council. I understand there might be a couple for fire that were, came up again in '09, '10, but we'll report back on those.
I have just one question. There's a very small amount here, but it's appropriation for asphalt for Lopez Canyon landfill, which is a closed landfill. Why are we paving a closed landfill on the canyon, pay our own streets?
I'm sorry, was that a question for me?
No. But if you want to answer, you can.
No, but I can answer the prior one after this one is answered.
I think they're looking, so you can probably answer the previous question. Ms. Corley?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I am not aware of any ordinances that were requested as part of Prop H, or excuse me, Exhibit H for us to prepare. There may be a couple of ordinances that are outstanding where we, again, need some information from the departments and we're working with them. I'll follow up on those. I think there were, there were two that were identified to, to me before, but those had been released.
Okay.
By the way, I'm informed that the ordinance you inquired about on the false alarms was released by us in April. I'm getting a copy of the report down for you as well.
Okay, and I was told it was passed two weeks ago by the council-
I believe so.
And will be implemented in 30 days. But if there, if there are, and I think Mr. Parks said this, if there are any departments that are not responding quickly, I mean, we almost, in some ways, should almost have those ordinances scheduled once a month until we get them and see, put everyone on the not seat a bit.
I'll have a report on the Exhibit H request next week.
Okay, I believe basically reimbursement, the 8500, 8600 is a reimbursement to the street services at Lopez. It is for the training academy. Basically, I guess they do some training up at the, that Lopez for some of the drivers.
That, that was funded supposedly out of the Lopez Canyon trust fund, that whole project. So, why shouldn't they pay for it out of the trust fund then?
It sounded like we need to just double check and follow up on this for the fund.
Now, that, that project is not a council-funded project. That was funded out of a trust fund, the director of the council, member of the district, and so they should pay for it out of that trust fund then.
Mr. Smith, Bill Robertson, Director of Bureau of Street Services, it's not asphalt. It was incorrectly identified. It's wrap material. We refer to as grindings, the sanitation uses for cover material, to cover the landfill.
Oh, that's a big difference.
Yeah, and it's only $8,000, so that's, you know.
I just know the project, and that's why it caught my eye. So, if it was not for the benefit of that project, then it's for landfill operations, and they're buying it from you, basically. Okay. That's a course of a different color.
What do we have in the reserve fund?
Basically, what's being protected is we'll have 168 million dollars in the reserve fund.
We'll have at the end of, at the end of last year, this year, right now, July 1, so that would be expect 200.
It's roughly what's being projected as of June 30th, that the close, it should be roughly about 217 million.
Last I heard, it was over 200 million dollars. Okay, so life isn't all that bleak if you have that. Just so people know, there is money. It's just a matter of our policies and procedures and situation. But we'll have 217 million in it at the end of this fiscal year.
Yeah, I'm not-
I'm, I'm sorry. No, that's the figure we'll have.
It's estimated, yeah.
The July 1 estimate is 242 million.
What's that?
The July 1 estimate in the adopted budget is 242 million on July 1. There's a difference between June 30 closing and July 1 opening, but.
But you might want to explain that that's not, all of it's not real money.
Yes, we, we would, we would expect to tap the reserve fund at some point next fiscal year.
Let me just ask a couple of questions. Do we know how much impact we've made on the recently funded positions in Department of Finance for the drilling down and also the amnesty? Any idea of what we've recovered so far on, particularly amnesty?
I'm sorry, how much?
The, the tax amnesty we've given, do we have any idea what we might have recovered since we put those positions in and whether they've, they've had time to drill down to a, a larger audit capacity?
Yeah, I can give you a quick update on the tax amnesty program. There was 5 million budgeted for this fiscal year, 5 million for next, the first couple of months of next fiscal year. As of last week, they had collected 1 million. And there'll be weekly updates from our office starting this week.
So, that's 1 million for this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. Have we had the ability to see the results on the expanded audits? Or is that going to be next year?
I'm sorry, what was it?
I'm saying, have we seen any impact with the expanded audits? I think we moved about, funded about 12 positions or something?
We don't have any detailed information at this, this point, other than the, the revenue estimate for this year appears to be in line with those estimates. I think we can follow up with-
Okay, if we can find out.
-finance and see where they are on that.
Okay. And then also, on the, on the LED conversion for street lighting, we did not approve that in this year's budget, but that was approved in next year's budget. Is that right?
You approved the program. I believe we had recommended this, sort of this action several months ago, and at this point, we would like to recommend it again as far as getting that program off the ground. This is, this is so funding to get that program kick-started.
But I mean, did we do that in the '9, '10 budget?
The program, Janice Chang, Office of the C A O, the program was adopted in the 2009, '10 budget. There was a request for front funding from this year's budget to start, kick-start the program.
Okay, so this is the front funding for next year's program?
Correct.
Okay, all right, got that. And then, could you explain on this issue of the sanitation and the cost being transferred to general fund for the Lifeline and, I guess, refuse collection from other city departments?
These are items that it was previously anticipated that they would be subsidized by the Solid Waste Resources Revenue Fund, but it has since been determined that it cannot be, and as a result, we're recommending appropriations from the U B Reserve for Economic Uncertainty to the general city purposes. The Department of, the Board of Sanitation, Bureau of Sanitation will be submitting invoices to both the C A O and C L A for review to, to appropriate these dollars.
Have we done this in the past, or this was the first year we recommended, we found it didn't meet the criteria?
This is the first year. Now, this is the first year that we've been at full cost recovery as well. Previous years, we have not. It was determined that basically these two particular programs, the Lifeline and services provided to other departments, this is a special fund, and these special funds cannot be used for these two programs. be used for these two programs. And then, and basically these actions are consistent with what you adopted in 2009, '10 budget?
Okay. And then, let me see, I think that pretty well covers the FSR, and so we'll move that to council, the item two, as I think we're...
Actually, I'd like to bring to your attention a few changes that we'd like to recommend or amendments to this report, and this is subsequent to the release of additional information since we released the year-end FSR. It has come to our attention that there are additional deficits projected within GCP, Medicare account, and defraile, retirement contributions account. As a result, we'd like to recommend additional appropriations from the UB Reserve for economic uncertainties. We would recommend an increase to the Medicare account of approximately $210,000 and to the defraile account of approximately $45,000. We will submit the detail.
Explain to us again, remind us on the defraile account?
We identified shortfalls in the FSR within these two accounts.
But what was, remind me again what the defraile account is?
The defraile is for all of the pre-1983 employees who pay less than 6%?
I got you. I thought we had one a while back that we asked for a report back that dealt with, what was it, pensions, or what people can buy into their, their additional, and it was supposed to be cost neutral, but we were doing some type of defraile cost on that, and we'd asked for a report back on that issue. Has that been resolved?
We'll check on the status of that, but what that was is basically, where folks, that their time in the academy, they were part of the pension savings plan, and once they actually move on, graduate, then they can come back and buy back that time, we have to follow up on that and get back to you.
Because that was one, I thought when we approved it, it was supposed to have been cost neutral, but yet we had a line item that was funding some of that shortfall. Any other additions or amendments?
Yes, we also received additional information from the city clerk. They're requesting a transfer of 3.4 million dollars. 2.6 million would come from the salaries as needed account, 1070. $800,000 would come from the salaries overtime account, 1090, to their elections expense account, 4170. There appear to be costs that are anticipated next year, to be paid next year, however, these are election costs that were incurred this year, and the department will need to pay some of these bills and encumber the funds this year, so they are requesting a 3.4 million dollar transfer.
And where is that coming from?
This is coming from their, their own accounts, salaries as needed and salaries overtime.
Okay, now how do we address the issue of their involvement with new equipment for future elections? Is that still on the front burner?
I believe there's been some movement on the RFP, but I will defer to the city clerk to address that.
Polly Walcott with the Office of the City Clerk. The current transfer does not address the, the equipment. The RFP report should be coming to you within the next two weeks.
Coming to committee or...
To committee, yes.
Okay, all right, so what, did we put money aside expecting what the cost might be?
I believe there's $30 million in the MICLA.
Did we put that in the UB or something?
No, I believe a couple of years ago, there was an allocation authorized, and it was $30 million from MICLA to pay for the new system.
All right, and so we still not worked, have we worked it out with the county and go jointly on that?
The county, the county of Los Angeles just reported to their board that they're getting ready to do a needs assessment, and currently, there are no certified systems out there, either federally approved or state-approved, and so, the county will be doing a needs assessment, and our recommendation will likely be that we work with them so that a new system can be developed.
So, that's part of the RFP response?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to the city clerk, there was also a request from the mayor's office for a $700,000 transfer within their accounts, transfer $700,000 from 1010 salaries general to 1070 salaries as needed, based on their current expenditure patterns. There is a recommendation, which was discussed in the year-end FSR, related to corrections that the Bureau of Street Services has been instructed by the controller to make regarding the 2007, '08 reversion worksheet. The recommendation was inadvertently omitted, and we will submit the required language to the city clerk on that. There is also, related to the solid waste fee lifeline rate program and the solid waste fee reimbursement items that are recommended for inclusion in the GCP, because it is anticipated that the Bureau of Sanitation will be submitting their billings for the 15 million, and they will be subject to review by the CAO and CLA. It may take some time for this review to occur, and we would like to recommend that the city clerk be authorized to encumber the entire 15 million dollars pending in 2008, '09 billings, so that they could be paid out.
Again, I'm asking, what was the system?
Pardon me?
What was the system for the 15 million?
The 15 million?
Yes.
Was related to the solid waste fee lifeline rate program?
Okay, that's the, that's the, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, it's more of a timing issue, we just want to make sure the clerk can encumber the money, hold the money, and then wait for the bills until we make sure they get paid.
Very good.
And lastly, we'd just like to recommend a technical correction to recommendation number 15. There's two amounts listed, the correct amount should be 150,069.
Okay.
And we will submit all the necessary technical instructions.
Okay, very good. So, we will adopt item one as amended, and do we know when that's coming to council?
I don't believe we have a placeholder, but I don't know if we can do Friday?
Request a special meeting.
Okay, and then the item that we talked about earlier on number 12, do we have a placeholder on that, and that deals with the layoffs?
We have not requested one, but if you would like to move that for Friday as well...
I think that would be important, because everybody would be waiting for, that was the one item, I think we promised the council that they would get a vote of when this would be initiated, so I think we need to bring that as quickly as we can.
Mr. Parks, would you mind if I, I don't know, item number one, and this is an appropriate amendment, so I haven't talked too about it, but in talking about this alarm fee ordinance and the time it took to get here, and it went to a couple of committees and so forth, does it make sense to have as part of this FSR or some other kind of motion, which says that any ordinances that are fee increases either only come to budget and finance committee or come directly to council?
You know, we could do that, I think we asked before, and it seemed like the prior answer, I think from the President of Council, was that you wanted the policy committees to look at it, but we can...
Why don't we go and try and amend it? I'll talk to the President of Council as well, but I think we do not want, you know, it to be held up, and any, any council member of another committee can attend this committee meeting.
Or we could say that the chairman of the policy committee could request a joint meeting at their option. They can, they can either waive it from their committee or ask for a joint meeting, but that won't delay it, that way.
Correct. There's a week, a two, a month, that, you know, just a lot of, when you look at some of the dollars we've lost.
I was going to say, I think it would be appropriate, I mean, in the case of the planning, where there needs to be some discussion on those fees, it's appropriate to have a joint meeting, but certainly where there's a fee that's been adopted and it's X dollars, I think the policy discussion is, has already been occurred, and so it's procedural, let's bring the ordinance forward.
Okay, all right, we'll add that direction to, to item one, making that as a recommendation for all of those ordinances on Exhibit H. So, again, could we make sure that we get a date, one for 12, so that we can get that moving? And then, one thing I'd like to just make one little change, we asked for Exhibit H for next week, and I understand the calendar for the budget finances overwhelmed already. If we can do the following week, two weeks for Exhibit H, the CAO and CLA's response to the other issues and the ordinance issues by the city attorney. And so, if we can do that, the follow, not next week, but the following week. Okay, that leave us just with number two? Okay.
Item number two is a CAO report relative to a declaration of the 2008, 2009 Special Parking Revenue Fund surplus and revision of the 2008, 2009 budget.
Janice Chang, Office of the CEO, the report before you is the second part of the adopted budget attempting to declare a 2008, 2009 surplus from the Special Parking Revenue Fund. Originally, as reported in the mid-year FSR, anticipated revenues, increased revenues in parking meters was down by about 15.7 million, and the sale of the main Grove property would not occur this fiscal year, resulting in a decrease to the general fund of 30.4 million dollars, for a total decrease of 46.1 million dollars. This report declares surplus approximately $6 million in meter revenue, and also recommends approximately $30 million in funds within the Special Parking Revenue Fund that our office has determined to be completed projects indefinitely stalled, and also swapping of funds with the Vine Street Garage, moving that project to MICLA financing, to use the cash to help create this surplus.
Okay, let me start off by, let me, on the issue of the 6 million for meter revenue, what is the rationale that we're 17 million below projection?
The ordinance to allow the increase of the meter rates was delayed by about two months. That was the beginning of that. In addition, there were, there was a two-part rollout of the increased rates and also hours of operation, and so far, there has, there has been a delay in implementing the hours of, increased hours of operation for these meters. And it can also be assumed that a portion of that has to do with the current economy, state of the economy, that meter revenues are also down, and the department can answer additional questions.
The issue is, is that we are aware, I think, that the ordinance was delayed, but on the delay in the, I guess, changing the meter hours, and also, if you can incorporate in your answer, where are we on the RFP for changing out the system?
Thank you, Councilmember Amir Sadadi, Assistant General Manager, Department of Transportation. As Ms. Chang mentioned, there's actually some complexities with that. When we started this almost a year ago, the proposed Schedule 11 assumed a much higher base revenue, so right off the bat, we were off by about 2 millions off of that base, because it was a projection of that revenue coming in, and then on top of that, revenues were perceived, and as mentioned, there was a three-month delay in getting that ordinance, so we couldn't start our program until September 1. So, that added another roughly, I think it was about 4 to 5 million dollars worth of revenue projections that would not come in. And as we did roll out, I think we had limited staff, and we were asked to do this project in an expedited manner, so we put all the resources to do the rate changes in the, in the hours. So, as we did that, there are some complexities with maintenance, so as the same staff that we had had to go out and change the meter rates, and some of the meters, maintenance program failed, so there's multiple assets of that, and not only this happened, but in the same timeframe, you know, the perfect storm of the economic conditions worsening and businesses hurting more, and, you know, parking is not exempt from a recession, so people weren't parking as much, and we also see that in our parking violations drop-off. So, to go back to your other question, Councilmember, the RFP for the parking meters, we were moving forward with that until this discussion with P3 came into place, so as that discussion has been occurring, that project has been put on hold, because we couldn't do both, we couldn't put out a major issue, major RFP for parking meter technology if the mayor and council hasn't decided what they wanted to do as a public-private partnership. And again, there was also a staffing issue as well, so there's a combination of both of those things. Since the discussions have taken place, the department is gearing back up to finish preparing the RFP. We're not ready to release it yet, but as you work to get information on your studies and on decisions on your public-private partnership, the department is committed to finishing up the request for proposals, so at a time when you're ready to make that decision, that we're not behind in releasing the RFP, but we're not quite there in order to release the RFP.
Let me just say, I think all of us would have appreciated knowing it when that was put on the back burner, because the council approved moving forward on the RFP, and even though the other discussion of the P3 came into being, I think a number of us were still asking what the conditions of our existing system and what would be the benefit overall of our running the system fully functional with new equipment versus going to the P3 concept, and I think it was very late in the game that many of us found out that the RFP was put on hold, and so I would just ask that when those decisions are made, that we be made aware of them so it can be discussed, and council members will know that what they approved is being reconsidered or asking us to reconsider our decision. And then, let me ask on the...
Thank you, Bob.
Yes.
You didn't think you'd get away from me with gold in the gutter.
I wore my T-shirt.
Yeah, you don't have your T-shirt on right now. When you stopped the process and all that, how much revenue do you think potentially, forget this P3 business, if we get it all in line and we get the right hours in, we get the messages out, increase, do you think you could generate from that?
Well, we're actually probably looking at closer to 10 million than the 6 million right now. Again, there's been some changes and challenges as we are working with the collections, and again, I have, we as a city have quadrupled some areas and doubled 200% to 400% increases. We've added another 25% of hours, meaning more people are putting coins into these things, but we haven't added the resources to then collect and count and do that. So, as we, again, use the same resources, use overtime, do what we can to manage that up, I think we've ramped them up right now to about 3.3 million a month, so I think we're closer, I hope, by this, end of this fiscal year to, to get us to 10 million instead of 6 million. But moving forward, you know, I think if the department would have a plan in place, as I mentioned, the RFP is, you know, gearing up towards completion, so I can't tell you exactly what the dollar value would be if we had the RFP out and we would have changed the equipment. We do have about 85% of our meter technology, that's still the old technology, we've only, we're changing, we changed out about 15% of our meter plant, so, you know, as, all I can tell you is the sooner, I think, you make a decision about what the future policy is, either going through a P3 or going this way, the city would be in a better shape, both from revenue-wise and, you know, equipment that are working and better for the public.
I mean, some of us probably feel comfortable about the structures, but when...
I mean, some of us probably feel comfortable about the structures, but when it comes to the meters, good number of us, I don't know what the numbers are frankly, but I'm totally against it at this point because there's not even a mature product out there that I understand and have a handle on and would know what it would be worth if I was even thinking about, you know, a P3 strategy on it. Anecdotally, some people have told me they'll go to the meter and they put the quarter in, and it's full. Is that a common issue right now, and is that because of the lack of meter mates taking in the money? What's the real problem on that?
Combination of different areas. We have increased collection routes. We are working with our current collection contractor. There were some issues with some of the electronic locks we had that they weren't reporting these things to us that were broken, so we thought that they were being collected, and they weren't being collected, so therefore, the public was putting more money in them, but, you know, we didn't realize. So we're using technology, we're working more administratively to make sure that we're all on the same page, to get those things collected more often so that they're full less often. That means the public can use them. But as I mentioned, some of our technology hasn't changed. We aren't able to put all of these technology with credit card and cellphone payment throughout the city. We're able to do that about 15% of the meters. So depending on the locations, we are running into those challenges right now. The other challenge that we couldn't get ramped up fast enough to do was the signs. A lot of the meters, as we changed the rates in hours, as you directed us to do last budget, the signs take much longer to do. We have to work through the council office with the communities on that, so it's taken much longer to now match those signs. So we're not enforcing those areas because the signs are still the old signs, and the meters have the new information on them. So we're diligently right now working to try to complete that project, and I think, again, it's just a staffing issue.
With that, really knowing what we're going to do as a council, but like I mentioned to you about my sensing of meters, until we really have a maturity of it and standing in a hole, I don't even want to put it anywhere near somebody to look at because I don't think we know what we're doing ourselves. Have we taken a look at what's been happening in Chicago from your standpoint? They've got to run that mayor out on the rail because of the absolute insanity of how that process went. Are we getting some best practices out of that that we can share here?
Yeah, actually, probably the task force can better speak on that, but personally, yes, I have received some information, some requests from City of Chicago right now that looking at information from us in order to maybe benchmark some of their programs. So just, yeah, I have read what's basically news in the public, but I can't talk about the, maybe the task force can.
Let's assume on one level here that we're not going to move forward with selling or partnering or whatever with the meters. How long would it take you to get that 15% up to 100% and upgrade all of our systems to state-of-the-art and have that flexibility in our system?
The draft RFP is looking at a approximate two-year turnaround time. So by the time you release the RFP, and that whole period may take as long as maybe six to eight months, and then from that point, you got about, what we had proposed in our program would be a two-year program to completely re-haul all of the parking meters, the other 85%.
And then some of us wouldn't mind more meters in different spots if it's done appropriately, with obviously, from my perspective, at least from my district, we'd like to share in the revenue so that we could use it to create, you know, parking facilities, one in the Palisades we were looking at, another one in Venice we were looking at, from future meters. But in general, these meters were put in many years ago, or the concept of these meters. Businesses have shifted, streets have changed, and there are business areas that would make sense even from the business perspective. For instance, without suggesting meters, on Abbott Kenny, the main street, not the backlot, there's a four-hour spot, there's a two-hour spot, there's a one-hour spot, and Abbott Kenny's all the same these days. And so people have come to me and said, why can't we just make it all standard on the street, which of course, they have suggested to me, two-hour. Have we kind of, I'm not, I'm just using Abbott Kenny as an example. Have we looked at some of our streets and now reflected to fine-tune some of those aspects of it?
We actually do that, Councilmember, and we work with your offices or the constituents as it comes in. We go through a petition process. So through that petition process, we go out and do a study, a parking study, and see if the behavior has changed from a four-hours to a two-hours. If people are only staying 40 minutes, then we, you know, we go to a shorter timeframe. But obviously, 40,000-plus meters and the non-metered areas goes through our district offices, so it is work in progress, and we can do that in case by case. And right now, we're actually working on a major report for Councilmember Garcetti because Hollywood has different, changed in some of the areas, and they're looking to see if the one-hour could be changed to two-hour.
All right, I mean, just request you do it on Abbott Kenny for two hours or take a look at it, right, if you can?
We're working with your office on that.
Okay, that would be very helpful. But in conclusion, I'm saying that you're saying it'll take about two years to really get it all together from this point on.
Two, yeah, after you've awarded a contract, if we go that route, then, yeah, it'll take about two years.
And then we could conceivably think of where our real revenue stream would be. When we get it organized, get a handle on it, get the new technology in, and you might be able to sit there and tell us we could gross X dollars a year or net Y dollars.
Definitely, not today, but we definitely, again, we were working on that path, and right now, we're gearing back up to that path. So it's, you know, at some point, if, you know, we can work with the CAO and provide some sort of a PowerPoint or some information, that would help the council. We're happy to do that.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And of course, we would certainly like to be a part of this discussion. As you know, we've talked about P3s and whether we actually go forward or not. We still, I'm going to make another plug here, for us to be able to move forward on some of the studies, because part of what you're asking is really the information, the data, as far as, you know, one, the Kenny, it might be the street versus the backlot, you know, here, there, across the city. You know, having the information is, essentially gives us more power in order to make better-informed decisions.
Of course, and from my perspective as a policymaker, you know, I would love to know like the capital dollars we would need to change everything, you know, to the new state-of-the-art, how we could look at certain streets where we don't have meters, where maybe there should be. We could come up with a real plan of not just the capital expenditures, but the revenue streams and project it over a period of years. And that's one of my personal reasons why I don't want to sell a pig in a poke or sell a half-baked cake, and I just don't think, as a former businessman, I would ever do anything like that unless I knew what I had as the basic facts and information.
Yeah, and I believe that's what the task force is looking at. They just met with the department last week and for us to provide all their information on the traditional approach and time and cost, and so I think that's what the consultants are looking at right now to come back to this council with the information of if you did it this way, what the costs and benefits would be, cost-benefit analysis.
Very cool. Thank you.
Ms. Parks, I just want to thank Amir because we had our own challenges in my district and in the parking meter implementation. The good news is we get new parking meters, and the bad news was we got new parking meters that were new and different to the communities. I just want to thank you because you really did work with the neighborhood, and as you're looking at these different places in the city, I just want to say thank you because I know it's not always tough, excuse me, not even, not always easy, it's tough to sit in some of those meetings because it's a very personal issue when we talk about parking meters and parking rates. And I think we look forward to the, for the discussion. Just, the RFP is where in CAO or your, I know you were stopped in that part, but now coming forward?
Yeah, the department is gearing back up the work that's needed to finalize the RFP. So that's where we are. We're finishing up the RFP, as I mentioned, but we're not ready to release it because it's not done yet.
Okay.
Let me just ask on the, it goes hand-in-hand with the continued study, and again, I think from the comments from the council when this P3 item came forward, if I can, on a synopsis comment, that it appeared that there was a willingness or desire to move forward on the RFP so that we can continue to upgrade our system, but that there was also a request to evaluate our system as it currently is. And there may be some confusion, I wanted to see if we can clarify it, is that there was an allocation prior for $500,000 to go out and do that study. If I remember correctly, I thought that the council put all that on hold with the expectation that if money was going to be spent to oversee a study, that that oversight would be provided by the Controller's Office as she's able to bring in experts to look at this and tell us where we are. And I hope that maybe others can comment as to their remembrance, but I thought that's where we were on this issue.
I think, and Jay Mueller's not here, so he's the one that I talked to primarily on that issue, is there was two parts of it. I think they had already gone out to and contracted with on the initial stage, and the Controller's Office, from my understanding, has participated in the, as part of the team and the task force, and that's the latest I have on that project, so.
Mr. Chair, Warren Morales with the CLA's office, if I can just update a little. The City Controller's Office has in fact joined the Parking Strategies Team and has attended and is actively involved in the discussions. In addition, they're also functioning in the first portion of it, as Councilmember Groom mentioned. KPMG is doing a study of the current situation with regard to revenues, and the Controller's Office is assuring their audit function over that study. So it is a direct interaction with the Controller's Office.
And that's the $500,000 that was already allocated?
That is correct, and we have requested through your staff, we are preparing a joint report with the CAO for an update to the council, and we're requesting a DAPB place on the 15th agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me just ask also, the issue I'm most concerned with Item 2 is it appears that we're going in a different direction as we discussed in the Budget and Finance hearings for the budget, that in this instance, and I know we're short of cash and we're trying to find every place there's cash, but it appears that in two instances at least that run somewhere in the neighborhood of $25 million, we're basically moving two projects out of Special Parking Revenue, which is designated to fund them, and even to the point where on one of the projects, we've already bonded and leveraged the money to get this project built. And we're, in order to recover the cash out of each one of them, we're now talking about moving the debt service to the general fund and funding them by MICLA. And this is something that seems to be inconsistent with our prior discussions, and whether it's to the greatest benefit, or do we need to re-scope how we're dealing with this? And I realize the 30-some-odd million dollars we're trying to recover to close out this fiscal year is important, and we create a hole every time we make a change, but I'm concerned that we're going to be creating additional dollars and burdens on the general fund that we need not to do. And so I'd just like you to comment on that and carry over from our earlier conversation.
I understand. I believe back early this year, in the mid-year, perhaps even prior, we talked about sort of, knowing that we were going to need additional SPRF monies or monies from some of the source to help close this year. Now, as we've gone through the months, you know, departments have done a good job, appropriations, their shortfalls have declined, however, we're still left with about a $38 million gap. Now, previously, as I mentioned, we did talk about Vine Street, and that was one of the solutions that was proposed several months ago about taking 16.5 million, taking the cash out of the fund and then transferring that to the MICLA long-term debt. What was added in here was sort of the, the other parking structure, the IESO structure is actually transferring that to the debt as well, and that's basically taking cash out and then transferring it to MICLA. Both of these are certainly long, are policy issues as far as do we need, how bad do we need the cash today versus transferring that long-term debt obligation to the general fund? And that's what's presented out in the report today. Now, we had already talked about the Vine, but now we've concluded another project.
Yeah, but what about the timing? Is the timing on either one or both of those projects so necessary that we have to make this kind of movement now? Or are there other funds, and I mentioned to you earlier, that I think one of the projects had some committed CRA money, and we know that CRA has recently won that '07-'08 lawsuit, and also we removed the $1290 funds out of the budget this year. Whether those funds would be more appropriate than going to MICLA, where we'd have to be paying a debt service somewhere between 10 or 20 years over the next several decades to get this done? And so, again, I don't know what the debt service on 25 million, but if we're going to pay it on a credit card, it's going to be more expensive than if we pay it with cash money.
That's correct. On the Vine Street, originally proposed is roughly about 16.5 million. I believe there's another $4 million for that particular project that was, was supposed to be funded from CRA. I understand based on the line of questioning that there may be some concern about that four, whole $4 million, whether that is there, whether that has been cut in half. This report only talks about the original 16 that was originally proposed a while ago. Now, we'll be happy to work with the council office and CRA to find out whether that original $4 million that was really to be thought that would become from CRA, whether or not there are other avenues to make sure that remains that $4 million, or whether there is truly a shortfall in that particular funding source for the project.
What happens if we do not move the $38 million out of the Special Parking Revenue Fund as it relates to this, or if not all of it, a large portion of it doesn't move at this time?
Basically, if we don't move the big significant portion out, it will create a hole as far as closing this year. And so we expect that then we'll have to hit the reserve fund as far as meeting our year-end obligations.
Would it give us more timing or more time if, I mean, again, the whole issue is whether, how involved or how quickly did either one of these projects have to move? Would it be in our best interest if it's a timing situation that we look at the reserve fund for a short period and then always know that the Special Parking Revenue is there? But again, to make a, this kind of hit and put it on a charge card just makes me concerned that we're paying down the road for something that is legitimately within the fund that was set up to resolve these kinds of issues. So we're kind of moving money around, but we're taking it out of what was established as a identifiable source of revenue in order to fund it another way, and it's going to cost us more in the long run.
The Vine Street, I believe they were, were going to award the construction bid, I think, in August, so there's a little bit of time there. I don't know what the timing is on the other project. We'd have to get back to you on what that construction, where they are on that.
The IESO project is scheduled to start once the Motor Transport Division--
It's supposed to be with them?
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear what you said.
The IESO garage is scheduled to begin construction once the NTD building is complete.
What's the timeline on that?
I believe it's either July or August this 2009.
And that's the one that we've already sought out, leveraged by bonding against the Special Parking Revenue Fund, which is exactly what we'd expected to do. We're going to move that out and put MICLA in its place, which again, goes inconsistent with what I think we were trying to reduce our debt in future years and not hit that 23% mark that we hit last year. I mean, are there any other options in looking at this, or?
Probably at this point, very few. I know we were always, we were trying to go through all the accounts and scrub much of this. There are funds that basically we can sort of sweep for now with the, sort of the repayment, what I'll call it, in the future. Certainly, if we look at the 16-5 and the other IESO project, they're big amounts, they're big amounts, and if we don't do some sort of a swap, then we'll have to go back and either look at the reserve fund or find out whether we have any other savings. Unfortunately, at this late stage in the fiscal year, I don't see any big pots of money that we could tap into.
Okay, great, good deal. Bill?
I'm ready to go.
Oh, yeah, Billy? Jose?
I understand Vine Street, they haven't, have they opened this to your service?
Yeah, but you know, one of the things, because of the timing and such, let me ask colleagues if we can maybe move this without recommendation and see if you can fill us in. This will be coming Friday also along with the FSR or, because I think FSR is depending on this, right?
Yes, they need to be tied together.
Okay, so we tie that together and see what other information you could bring forward. Has the bids for Vine Street been open? I mean, is it already?
The bid has been released.
Released? I mean, what does that mean?
It's released, but we haven't awarded.
Haven't awarded.
Are the bids back?
No, the bids have not been received yet.
So we can cancel it any time we want.
But the thing is, we don't know what the cost, what their cost is either, right?
The current estimate is $21 million.
I know, but we don't know what the bids, haven't come back and said what they're bidding on it.
No.
Why don't we, like I said, we'll send this to the item one, but we need more information
by the time it comes to council because, again, and again, we need some figures on, if we're talking about MICLA, how much more is that going to cost in order to use real money to fill the void in the general fund? So if we can get some additional information, then I think whether we're satisfied or not, we at least have more information.
Yeah.
And then we can deal with it. So if we move item two without a recommendation, but it's part and parcel of item one because it's dependent on closing the budget gap, but also if you can look at other alternatives with CRA money that's come in and other things such as that, we can get a better idea if we have other options. Okay? Any other questions on item two? Okay, let me just ask, I forgot, Mr. Cardenas asked on a couple of things, if we can add in the mid-year report under council file 080600, he had asked some specific information regarding the gain reduction program information regarding for both the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gains and the Budget and Finance Committee about the use of the $24 million in gain reduction, how much of it's been spent intervention, and about $7 million in saving. Those questions have not been asked, and he's asking again that we emphasize it and add that to this report, re-requesting that information. And also, if we can ask the CAO to look at, we made a sweep of ITA account and he's asking us whether that money on the account can be held or allowed to be held in their account for their, let's see, reprogramming, dealing with their software and hardware requests that have gone unmet. So if we can look at ITA on some funds, it's roughly about 1.5 million. And then on the issue of the request for information from Mr. Cardenas for his committee under that file number, and we could ask that to be added as requested, look into.
We'll work with the mayor's office to try to obtain the information on the gain reduction, questions that were asked. And I did speak with Randy Levin this morning regarding her budget for next year. I know she has some concerns, but we'll be happy to work with her.
Was that one of the departments we gave the extra stipend to?
No.
Okay, all right. But those are two things that he asked that we look into and have some response. So we're going to add those to the committee and ask for requests. Any other comments on two? We have no public comment, so we'll adjourn. Thank you very much.